For Barstow City Council, Barstow Fire Protection District, August 19th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Ask that we all please stand for the pledge which will be led by our mayor pro tem, Barbara Rose.
Thank you. Please join me as we honor the flag and what it represents. Ready? Begin.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public vote and coordination of their individual liberty and justice.
Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Williams is absent and all other members are present.
Thank you. Participation is invited. If you wish to be heard on any item on the agenda, including any item on the consent calendar, please so indicate by filling out a speaker request card and hand it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Our code of ethics, as your elected governing board, we will remember the code of ethics that we voluntarily and unanimously approved. During this meeting, we will treat each other and the public with patience, civility, and courtesy. The decisions made tonight will be for the benefit of the Barstow community and not for personal gain. Of the comments of closed session, this is the time and the place for the general public to address the governing board on matters on the closed session agenda and within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes or less. All requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on closed session?
We do. Our first speaker is Mr. E.T. Snell.
E.T. Snell, clown community activist.
Welcome, Mr. Snell.
www.ETSnell.com. I want to speak on the city manager. We were doing a performance evaluation. I just can't, I can't get my hands around why you hired somebody. And in my sense, she's a bad person. I'm just saying, why you hired somebody that lives all the way in Riverside? It just doesn't seem to me prudent because the hours that it takes to drive back and forth to work. And if you guys knew that when you hired her, that means you're going to give her slack and she can do what she wants to do. But I'm still waiting answers on the, when we hired the police chief. I was still waiting for some answers as to, as to how many people applied for the position. I think that should be public record. I don't know why I haven't been able to get an answer yet. Well, I know why. But how many people were interviewed, I don't think is going to be a big, should be a big thing. And then we had police chief involved from Banning where she used to be. It just, it just, it just didn't seem right. And I still would like some answers as to why, how many people we interviewed and what was the, because that whole thing was just, it just seemed like such a, to me anyway, it seemed like a circus. It didn't seem like. And then we hired somebody that has a two-hour drive and that's not in traffic. That's, well, that's smooth. So it just, it seems that we, she was hired because she was going to be the rubber stamp for the council and do what they want to do. And then to bring in that police chief from Banning where she used to, from what I understand, used to be involved with him. It just, it just doesn't seem right. I'm not saying we got a bad police chief now, but if we're going to do stuff, we have to be transparent and we have to do things in a, in a manner that shows integrity and Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Snell.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Hernandez.
Thank you, sir. My only question is to the city manager. You've been here six months. Are you ever going to hire somebody to take your messages or a way to contact you? I think after six months, you should have somebody set up that if they need to get a hold of you or want to get a hold of you, they can. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
We have no more comment.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion and a second to go into closed session.
I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez, a second by Councilmember Noble. A call for the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously?
Thank you. With that, we'll go into closed session.
City Council Barstow Fire Protection District for August 19, 2025 to order at 7:00 PM. I ask that everyone please stand and we are going to have an invocation by our council member, Noble.
Please bow your heads. Most heavenly Father, we come to you today for your guidance and wisdom and on support. Father God, we ask for you to continue to watch over each and every one of us as we go through our meeting this evening. Father God, we ask that you watch over our sick and our shut-in. And Father God, we ask that you put your loving arms around and protect them. Father God, we ask that you give each and every one of those that are on their way traveling grace as they come to this meeting. And as they leave this meeting heading home, we ask that you give them traveling grace. We ask all of these in your presence. We pray. Amen.
Thank you, Councilor Noble. Please remain standing. We're going to ask Councilor Hernandez to please lead us in our salute to our flag and our nation.
Will you please join me in our pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Hernandez. Madam Clerk, may we have roll call, please.
Yes, roll call is completed. All members are present.
Thank you. Participation is invited. If you wish to be heard on any item on the agenda, including any item on the consent calendar, please so indicate by filling out a speaker request card and hand it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Our code of ethics, as your elected government governing board, we will remember the code of ethics that we voluntarily and unanimously approved. During this meeting, we will treat each other and the public with patience, civility, and courtesy. The decisions made tonight will be for the benefit of the Barstow community and not for personal gain. Review and approval of the agenda, this is the time for members of the governing board to call for the rearranging the order of the agenda, adding items or removing items from the agenda, or removing items from the consent calendar for discussion and/or separate action. action. Items may only be added to the agenda as allowed by state law, including Government Code Section 54954.2 subdivision B, allowing emergency items to be added by majority vote, and allowing items that arose to the city's attention after the agenda posting deadline, but which require immediate action to be added by a two-thirds vote of the council members present at the meeting, or if less than two-thirds of the council members are present, the unanimous vote of those members present.
Mayor, I should do the close session report either now or after the vote on the agenda.
Go ahead and then we'll call for the vote.
Thank you. So the council met a close session on two items. One was conference of labor negotiators regarding all employees, both unrepresented and represented, and provided direction to staff and council and the labor negotiators, but took no reportable action. And second, regarding the public employee performance evaluation for the city manager, there the council provided a direction to council, but took no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Summers, so I will call for a motion, a second for the agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to motion to approve, but I'd also like to pull item number seven, and that's the minutes for, to look at a potential typo and to pull item number 10.
I'll second. Okay, I have a motion by the mayor pro tem, which would pull item seven and item 10 from consent and put them into, just before business, I have a second on that motion by council member Williams. Any discussion? Councilman Hernandez?
No, but I also was going to request that we pulled 10, so I can comment on that.
Yes, 10's in the motion. And also be aware that you can comment on a consent item. It doesn't have to be pulled for discussion, but it is pulled, so I'll call for the vote.
And the motion to approve the agenda pulling's item seven and 10 for discussion, for further discussion passes unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, we'll go on to presentation section of our agenda. First is item number three, certificate of recognition for season three members of the Barstow Captive Dance Company. And are we going to the front for that? We are, okay.
So as council makes their way to the front, a little about the dance company. Captivated Dance Company is entering its fourth year in Barstow, offering competitive and recreational dance for children ages two and a half and up. Season three company, a team of 28 dancers competed across California, earning multiple first overalls, top three, top five, and diamond placements. Their final competition in Palm Springs received the Elite Studio Award, one of only four given out of 37 studios. Two groups advanced to the grand finale, where our junior hip-hop team placed third overall, and our junior open team won first overall Grand National Champions, the highest achievement for ages nine to 11. We are proud of our dancers' accomplishments, and when I call your names, please come up to the front to receive your certificate and then join the mayor and council in the center. Our first dancer is Gabriela Chavez. Arabella Aglekor. Ariana Chavez. Audrey Schreiner. Ava Sanchez. Azariah Joseph. Jalen Park. Journey Cordova. Jovi Cordova. Kelsey Schreiner. Madeline Breones. Olivia Sloan. Periana Daniels. Peyton Harris. And Rosa Pacheco. Those are your dancers.
Let's get the younger ladies here in front. No tall ones by the mayor. Hold on, is there a coach, a leader, please? Okay. And we're going to have you say a few words, too. Okay, stay here, you're great, stay here. As promised from day one with this council, we want to recognize the accomplishments of the talent in Barstow, especially our youth. So young ladies, thank you for what you do, stay involved, dancing, right? Keep dancing, okay. We're going to have your coach tell us a little bit about your group.
So just a little bit, I'm sure she kind of briefed everything, but a lot of these girls work tremendously hard every single week. They train throughout the entire year, so it's not just through the school year, it's through summers, and they dedicate a lot of time in the studio, training, and they put in a lot of work this last season to have a lot of accomplishments, especially at Nationals. All of us coaches are so proud of you girls, and it's just awesome to see our small town represent so big in another city, and it goes up against nationally, so we're going up against people from Texas and Phoenix and all across just the states. So it's super cool to know that Barstow has, it may be small, but it has a lot of talent. So thank you, girls, and thank you guys all for your time and appreciating our accomplishments.
Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job, good job, young lady. Congratulations, good job. Congratulations, congratulations, outstanding. Did I, I got you, right? Okay, congratulations, congratulations. Good job. Keep up the hard work. Congratulations, congratulations. I like that hair.
Thank you.
What's next, SBCTA?
At that thing I'm doing, too.
Rochelle, I'll announce the item you want to introduce the speaker. Okay, our second presentation, item number four on our agenda this evening, is a Measure I presentation by the SBCTA, San Bernardino County Transportation Authority. Ms. Clayton, city manager.
Yes, thank you, mayor, members of the council. I would like to introduce legislative, from the Legislative Affairs, Public Affairs Office, Mr. Luis Vedour to provide this presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Louis Vedour. I'm with the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, better known as SBCTA. Tonight, I wanted to provide a brief overview and reminder of what SBCTA, and especially Measure I, plays in delivering transportation projects in the city of Barstow and throughout the county. SBCTA is the regional transportation agency. It charged with planning for San Bernardino County's 24 cities, towns, and five supervisory districts. We're established in 1973 as the San Bernardino Associated Governments. The county's Council of Governments are a role that we still play today, and we're designated the county's chief transportation planning agency in 1989. Our governing board consists of representatives from the 24 cities and towns, including Mayor Silva, as well as the five county supervisors. Amongst our primary duties, SBCTA is the primary administrator of Measure I funds. Measure I plays a pivotal role in funding, planning, and delivering transportation projects throughout San Bernardino County. I want to play a quick video for you.
San Bernardino County is on the move, and it's thanks in large part to Measure I. First approved by voters in 1989, and again in 2004, Measure I is a half-cent sales tax dedicated to improving transportation across the county, and over the years, it's delivered real results. From extending the SR 210 freeway from LA County into Redlands, to easing congestion and cutting commute times, Measure I has made travel safer, more convenient, and faster for everyone. In our cities and neighborhoods, Measure I dollars have improved traffic signals, upgraded interchanges like SR 60 and Central Avenue in Chino, and repaved local roads like Niskewa Road in Victorville, keeping local streets running smoothly. For public transit riders, Measure I brought the introduction of MetroLink to San Bernardino County, expanded bus routes, the introduction of zero-emission bus and train options, and more accessible transit, connecting more people to jobs, schools, and healthcare. And it doesn't stop there. Measure I also supports bike lanes, pedestrian safety, and planning for future mobility, all while boosting our local economy by creating jobs and supporting construction projects across the region. What's another great thing about Measure I? It's locally controlled. That means San Bernardino County and city leaders decide how funds are spent rather than being directed by outside agencies. Because of Measure I, transportation in San Bernardino County isn't just keeping up, it's moving forward. Moving forward together with Measure I.
So a little history about Measure I. As the video indicated, it's a countywide half-cent sales tax approved originally by county voters in 1989 to fund projects from 1990 to 2010, and then overwhelmingly renewed by voters in 2004 to extend funding from 2010 to 2040. Since 2010, Measure I has raised more than $2.5 billion for transportation projects. It's contributed more than $700 million for local street, road, sidewalk, pothole repairs, and traffic signals. And combined with state and federal funds, Measure I has helped deliver $2.9 billion in regional projects, and most significantly, contributed to the creation of more than 32,000 jobs in the county. As those figure, and these figures don't include contributions, Measure I contributes to transit agencies such as Victor Valley Transit, Senior, and Specialized Transit Services. Some of the significant regional projects that Measure I has contributed to, the widening of US 395 and bridges, interchanges, and grade separations along Interstate 15, and soon, the Baker Boulevard Bridge replacement and replacement of bridges along Interstate 40 and National Trails Highway. Here within the city of Barstow, some examples of local projects that have and will benefit from Measure I funding are the First Avenue Bridge replacement over the BNSF Railroad, the Lenwood grade separation, Rim Rock Road improvements, First Avenue, Mojave Bridge, and Overflow Bridge replacement, Cameron and Monterra area improvements, as well as pavement, bike, and pedestrian improvements throughout the city. One of the key components of Measure I passed by voters was the inclusion of taxpayer protections. Among those are an independent taxpayer oversight committee to ensure that Measure I funds are spent appropriately. A cap of 1% of Measure I funds can be used for administrative purposes, and Measure I funds are regionally allocated based on a return-to-source model, which provides a reliable funding stream for the city for transportation projects. Finally, as we look to the future, we want to identify the needs of residents and want to ensure what you believe matters to include in our planning process. We ask you to register your opinion on our Measure I website at go sbct.com/measurei. As we look forward to the next measure possibly, the, as technology changes, as priorities change here within the city and throughout the county, this is an effort by SBCTA to gain insight in what's most important to you all. So we're hoping that everyone will engage with our website and with our staff and let us know what you'd like to see in future decades. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Yeah, stay there, I'll see if I have any questions by council. Mayor Pro Tem Rose?
I do have a question, and so this is, a lot of projects that you do within the cities and counties?
Yes, so it's every city and town, and the unincorporated areas represented by the five county supervisors. So we contribute to each city, town, and then each supervisory district is also returned to source. Anything generated within comes back on a population proportion.
Are you familiar with our cemetery?
I am not. I am not.
Yeah, I just thought I'd ask. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and incidentally, in fiscal year 2024, Measure I funds sent back to the city of Barstow was about nearly $2 million. So, I think, you know, it represents a consistent and steady funding stream that the city can rely on when planning local street, road, pothole, traffic signal that eases that burden on the city's share.
Thank you. I have no more requests for questions from council. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak from public?
Do we have one? Mr. Mike Hernandez.
Welcome, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, sir. I was just curious. Measure I takes about a half a million dollars of our Measure I funds a year, and we're getting back $2 million, which is over a four-year period. You would say that's what it is. But can it be used for other projects other than major regional or major freeways? Can it be used for, like, Section 7, that we've been waiting 45 years to get it done? Could you get Measure I money to finish that project? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Mr. Belair, would you mind answering that question?
Yeah, most of the Measure I funding to local cities, the city can either choose to bank it in support of larger projects down the road, or they can use it annually on local projects. And I believe Section 7 is on the future list of Measure I-supported projects, so it will be supported. I'm sorry? Future down the road, I suppose. Each of those projects are prioritized by the individual cities, but it is eligible for Measure I funding. And, you know, we continue to hope that this important funding stream continues into the future, and we look forward to getting your input from the council and the community.
Thank you. With no more requests to speak from the public, we will move on to our third presentation, Agenda Item Number Five, Presentation of the Collection Process. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I would like to introduce Finance Director Harris to provide this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council and residents. Give me one second as we get the, there we go. Get our presentation up. Okay, here we go. So, tonight, I'm going to present to you the utility billing process as it is currently within the city of Barstow. Also, upon request from council, I have some information on outsourcing this process and what that cost looks like. So, I reached out to our consultants, our contractors at Bertec, and asked them for an updated cost to billing our utility billing services. What I was given were the numbers that you see here. So, should Bertec assume active customer service for the city of Barstow accounts, the following costs are as follows. We currently have 6,171 residential accounts. Bertec would charge us $1.95 per account monthly for the cost of utility billing. So, this also includes customer service contact, so answering phones, changing services, any inquiries on service, the full customer service package. For commercial accounts, we have 1,043, and currently, those costs would be $1.70 per account. So, this monthly cost total, when you include liens, brings us to about, well, it's $12,000 for residential, $1,000 plus $1,800 for commercial, and $36,000 for liens. Annual cost combined would be just over $200,000. So, currently, the city employs two individual utility billing or accounting technicians that are solely dedicated to the process of utility billing. We are basically taking a look at our options for maybe a more efficient or a time-effective process. So, our current process is as follows. In the month of May, we run a report for all delinquent accounts for the past year. So, that's from May 1st in the prior year up to April 30th of the current year. We review those accounts for any type of updating that needs to occur. So, if we have move-in, move-outs, change of addresses, change of ownership for businesses, we scrub this list for this information that needs to be updated. The initial list of past due accounts is notified sometime in May of the delinquent accounts, and they are given an option to correct the issue. Once that process is completed, we actually bring in a request for hearing for council in preparation of bringing the delinquent accounts to council for the public hearing. And all during this process, we are continuously scrubbing these accounts, updating payments, and tending to the research of finding out any ownership of these accounts as we go along. Notice two goes out sometime during mid-June, and during the second notice, we are able to catch those that were identified as a different address during the first period and update that information and send out the notice during the second period. We rerun the delinquent account list to catch all of those updates that are being worked through the process, and any of those that have been resolved will fall off of the list. And then, sometime at the end of June, we send out the notice of protest hearing. So, once that is scheduled, and we have scrubbed the list and sent out all of our notices, we allow folks to come in, or we notify folks that they are allowed to come in and speak with council or staff regarding their past due amounts. June 30th is the last day to pay with non-certified funds. And what that means is that any payment that needs to clear, so any payment for credit cards or checks, we allow them to come in on June 30th. And then, early July, we have a last day to pay with certified funds. So, this is money order, cashier's check, or cash. At this time, we run the delinquent account list one last time to make sure that we've caught up with all of our research efforts. We have looked through the county websites to identify change of addresses. We've made contact with owners if we are able to get in contact with those folks. And we create the final list that comes to the protest hearing in late July. After the protest hearing and any payment arrangements that have been requested or made, the file is submitted to the county to assess on the property tax. So, this process is done once a year currently because of staffing allowances and the time that it takes to actually get through this process. A lot of the research that's involved is a manual process. So, that means that of the list of over 7,000 accounts, generally speaking, on average, we have about 12,000 that end up on this list, and each one of those has to be researched to see if there's any updating on the address. If we're not notified by the tenant or the owner, we're hopeful to find that information through the county resources. What we are, what we're attempting to do, once we have the second position for the utility billing technician filled, is we want to run this process a second time in the year. So, what this would look like is the same process, however, we would do this running from November through January. So, we would actually do a second lien filing around January or February of each year. This filing, however, would not go to the tax assessment role. This would create a lien and basically cloud a title, but it allows the owner to come in between the months of February to late July to actually cure this lien balance before it does go for the tax roll during the second process. All right, so we've also discussed changing another process that we have internally. Right now, our commercial bills are our largest dollar amount per account due in the city. And so, what happens is, because commercial accounts are billed monthly, and on average, some of these accounts can be upwards of $5,000. So, if these accounts are more than a month past due, they quickly become unsustainable for both the business as well as the city, since we do prepay these items and then bill our commercial folks for reimbursement. So, what we would like to do is we will begin running an aging report monthly, and we will have staff review that aging report for any of those accounts that are 60 days past due with an amount larger than $5,000. We will do our due diligence to attempt to find the new owner. Because commercial businesses have to be registered with a business license, we will use our partners over in the business license side to see if we can pull that license. And of course, we can do what we normally do, which is look in our accounts for new ownership through the county, look for returned mail, and any other business license information that we have accessible to ourselves. We can also use code enforcement if we ever get to a scenario where we're not able to reach out and find an owner. We will use our partners at Code Enforcement to do a field visit and maybe just knock on the door and see if there's someone there that can give us further information. Of course, once we have that information, we will update our accounts and send out any past due information that is available. All right, and we've also approached our third-party billing service who currently sends out our bills monthly, but we want to use them for more communication with our customers. So, we are now able to go into the actual bill itself and create a blurb or a communication. This could be anything from rates are due to change at this date, or maybe that our municipal code states that trash is a mandatory service in the city, anything of that nature, just to reach out and communicate with our constituents a little bit more readily available. So, we also would like to establish an internal administrative payment plan so that any of those customers who don't feel the need or desire to come to council and actually speak on their behalf regarding a past due, we would like to create a window of opportunity internally so that anyone who is in this situation can actually reach out to staff on any given day and arrange payments so that we can bring that information, once it's vetted, to council for final approval during the protest hearing. And that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Harris. I have Councilmember Williams.
My favorite thing, what is the current debt? What's the total?
So, this lien process is something that we will be satisfied with when the property either sells between interested parties or if it goes to tax sale. So, I recently sent the information out per request, and I don't have that in front of me, but I do know that over the last five years that we have been sending our tax roll to the county, we have received every bit, with the exception of the last $170,000. So, in essence, if our lien file, let's just take the last one, for example, if our lien file is about $600,000 to $700,000, over the course of the next few years, when the resident who has a lien pays their property tax, the amount that's owed to the city comes back to us out of that property tax payment regardless of the situation. So, it is rare that the city isn't made substantially whole throughout the lien process. It is just timely, and that's the concern.
And $170,000, who pays for that? I mean...
So, that amount has already been paid. That would be a reimbursement to the city.
So, the taxpayers are paying it?
Absolutely.
So, we're losing $170,000 to do whatever we need to do for our city?
That is correct.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Councilmember Noble.
Thank you, ma'am. Hey, Ms. Harris, you mentioned the, those that are repeat offenders. You kind of mentioned that. Can you kind of go over that in detail? How do we identify those that are repeat offenders? And what do we do? Do we put them in a special category?
Currently, we do not have a special category. However, there are some that exist, and that information, if requested, I can bring back to council to discuss. But what we have noticed, just from doing the process every single year, is that we have about the same 600 to 670 individuals that pay. And the long and the short of it, what's happening is that some folks pay their arrears through the lien process. So, every time we run the lien process, we have some of the similar addresses. And so, you know, it's a choice that the resident is making. It's a costly choice because there are a lot of administrative fees that go along with this process. However, these are similar addresses every single time we run this process. And we do have a historical recording of all the liens that we've ever recorded in this city, so we can very easily see if this individual has been on this list more than once. The process that I was referring to is, it's called clouding the title. And so, what happens is, there's a permanent cloud on the title so that if this individual sells their property, or the property is sold by the county, the city will be made whole and not miss the opportunity to collect that amount due.
Then, you also mentioned the payment arrangements. I know when they come before council, we turn them back over to you to make those arrangements. We don't have something like that already in...
So, we do allow for individuals who have gotten delinquent to make payment arrangements. However, there's a small administrative process where we like to evaluate if this person has been given this opportunity before. If we've allowed the account holder to have payment arrangements, but they have not satisfied those payment arrangements, then we don't generally give the opportunity for that again. So, we just go back and look in the account, just make sure that anything that council has approved for them has been satisfied.
But wouldn't something like that come before council to identify those individuals? But the general public, if they want to make arrangements, can do that without coming before council? But those that are abusers, that continue to fail on their arrangement, then come before council?
Correct. I believe that the reason why we allow for the individuals at the time of the protest hearing to request is because we don't have a standard payment arrangement. So, your bill is what your bill is, and you are given, for residential accounts, you're given the two months of the billing time to make on the bill due. We don't, on standard, we don't allow folks to make small payments throughout the course of the two months. We just would like to have the bill paid in full. So, when you get to the date for the protest hearing, by this point, the account is past due, and it makes it difficult because it is so large of an amount due that we allow for council to determine if they are willing to take a payment arrangement. So, we don't have that process standard, but during the time of the protest hearing, we do set up payment arrangements just to try to keep that person from having to go through a tax assessment.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman Noble. Thank you, Councilmember Noble. Councilmember Williams.
You know, when the residents come up, they're upset because they got a lien on their property and everything else, but I want to make sure it's very clear, that's the only way to get our money back. If we don't do the lien, then we are in jeopardy of not getting that payment, correct?
Correct.
So it's not us being mean or unfriendly or whatever they want to say. The problem is financially is the only way to get our funds back.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. I'm a little confused here on the presentation where you put liens and monthly cost, and you put $36,176, and then annual cost was the same amount.
Ah, that is a typo. I do apologize for that. What you see here is, oh, you know what? It is not a typo. Let me correct myself. Liens happen once a year. And so for this process, BRTech is willing to charge us $56 per account. And so since this only happens once, it's not a monthly fee. It's a one-time cost.
So it shouldn't have been in that column?
So it should only be in the annual cost, not the monthly cost.
Okay.
Yes.
And that's, that's my other question is, as far as, you know, the interest that the resident has paid and that, where would that money go?
So are you referring to the fees and the administrative charges?
Right.
Yes.
Correct.
So part of that goes in through the county for payment of filing the lien. And the other part of that pays its repayment to the city for the, basically, the staffing time that is put into actually completing this process. So it's essentially making the city whole for the time spent on this billing.
And I thought I read somewhere that we clear $200,000 a year?
For just the fees alone? So that's difficult to say because...
Yeah, you gave me some information somewhere. I came up with, you know, that I saw that number.
What happens is, once we file the lien, the amount due includes those charges.
Right.
But they don't necessarily come back to us all at once. So essentially, a person is allowed to make payments biannually for a part of the lien. And we don't know if it's paid in full that year, the next year, or however have you. So I can't really just lay the number out.
Yeah, but I know you had put that number down, and you know how I am about picking up them little, little things. You know, I really would like to see a process, and I know people know when they are having financial difficulties. And I would like for them to be able to come to the city and say, hey, I'm having this difficulty. And that we had a process to avoid those long-term situations they get into, because then it is just a process opposed to an embarrassment of coming to a public hearing. So if we could look at something like that, I would like to see if we could try, you know, try something to make it easier for the resident and also for the city to get whole sooner than later.
And then I'll have to add that that's exactly what we've been talking about, is of reviewing the outstanding accounts on a quarterly basis so that we can be proactive in reaching out, seeing if we can set up a payment plan, and not waiting until it's become a year.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hernandez. Mayor Potem Rose.
Thank you, mayor. And I'm glad to hear that the Ms. Clayton, that we're looking at on a quarterly basis, but because prior to you and in former city managers, former council, we have requested that we look at this more often. Quarterly would be, you know, a good timeframe. So thank you, and it's really good to hear that. And also, in that bullet, to say that we're establishing an internal payment plan, as Councilman Hernandez has stated, I think this is a wonderful thing. When would we be able to see some type of a process? And do we need a second to have a timeline?
I do not. We are, we just actually currently filled the recruitment for our second U.B. clerk, which would make a big difference on this process. Those two staff are solely dedicated to this. So if we were going to move up to a quarterly timeline, we would need enough time to kind of get the staff trained, prepared, and moving quickly enough to do this assessment then. So I could bring back a presentation that could, you know, show you an increased timeline. However, I'm not 100% certain on when we can effectively move towards quarterly.
I think it would be most appropriate to say by the end of this calendar year that we could come back with a presentation on, or at least an update to council, and if you so wish, a presentation on moving forward with that. That'll allow time for staffing to be fully trained.
Thank you. So you said calendar year, not fiscal year, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And I love the fact that we can make these little notes on the bills. We had asked about that.
Yes.
And here it is. So my question on that note, is it just, are they going to do just one note and all the customers get it? Or can it be, can it be a little more, a little more tailored towards that customer? For instance, if they, you know, if they're coming up for the lien, they're already being informed, but if they get the lien, something in here to say, hey, now you're in a lien process, and this is who you need to contact?
We do have a different type of notification for any, anyone who lands in the delinquent status. So they will receive kind of a, it's a standard letter that actually explains the process, how much is past due. So they do have a personal notification. This is more or less just kind of a all-points bulletin, hey, you know, things are changing, or understand that trash is mandatory, something like that that affects all. But yes, they do get a personal letter.
I really do like the note. And my last question would be, you had mentioned that the city would like to create a window for the customer to pay. What kind of window are we speaking of? And is it prior to?
So...
During or after?
So I was actually referring to the window surrounding the protest hearing, because we allow them to come in and actually request a payment hearing or a payment arrangement at that time. So I was thinking if we could maybe proactively talk to those individuals, maybe in the few weeks leading to the protest hearing? That way, we can gather all their information, we can vet the accounts to see if they actually could qualify for a payment arrangement, and bring those items to council so that you can actually see those, you know, without going in blind. You would actually know the individuals who have requested those amounts.
Thank you so much. That's all, mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. So just a little clarification on establishing the internal payment plan. I can't see you, apparently. Councilmember Hernandez has an admirer, so. So if they come in prior and they set up an internal payment plan, they're going to be brought to council. You made that clear. But are they going to still go on the lien list?
Yes. Those who make a payment arrangement are still put on the lien list. However, they are not assessed. So that means that it does not go on the...
The same as it goes now, just they don't have to come to the microphone. They can do this ahead of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And I have no more questions from council. Madam Clerk, any public comment?
Yes, I have Mr. Mike Hernandez.
Thank you, sir. At the last meeting that you had, when you put these liens on, it was $750,000, I believe, and $200,000 was fees. Now, those fees go directly to the city, I presume, when they're collected, and they pay their taxes at the end of the year, so the liens are taken off every year. They could be put back on the following year. But what I'm really concerned about is commercial. Commercial businesses here, well, like 25%, was over 200, over $2,000 a month in bills. You have some three, four, five, six, you had one guy at $10,000. Why did that go so long? Doesn't rules and policy have a policy for commercial that can be implemented or should be implemented to commercial business? You know, and the other day, I have commercial property. I was going to rent it out. And the city, the person I spoke to said that I would be liable for the sewer bill and the trash bill. Now, you're saying businesses are liable. And she told me the person who owns the property is liable. So I'm confused about that. I'd like to know which is the answer. Is it the property owner that's liable, or is it the commercial business that's liable? Because there's two differences there. Or is it the commercial business is liable, and then it's put on the property at a later date because they don't pay it? I don't know what the rule is on that. And she said that you could put it on the rent, that if you have commercial property and there was an assessment against it as far as for sewer and trash, that the property owner could put it in the rent, so, and the landlord would collect that fee. I don't know. Instead of trying to get something clarified, I got more confused speaking to someone in staff. And I find that kind of bad when you have people that are employed and can't give you the proper information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
We have no more comment.
Thank you. Ms. Harris, would you be able to clarify that commercially, who's responsible? And then, I believe that was the question.
Absolutely. So all of the accounts are the responsibility of the property owner, and it is upon the property owner to decide whether they want to charge the tenant through rent or otherwise. But this billing process, the liens that are involved, they are all the responsibility of the property owner. And yes, whoever you spoke to is correct, where they, the property owner is responsible, and if you decide to put it in the rent, that is something that you can do upon yourself. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so that, hold on, I lost my agenda. That concludes our presentation, and with that, we'll move on to non-agenda public comment. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the governing board on matters not on the agenda and within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes or less. All requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak for non-agenda public comment?
Yes, we do. Our first speaker is Mr. E.T. Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. You know, I'm still waiting for an answer from the city manager as to how many people she interviewed for the police chief's job, and this is not in no reflection on you, Chief Kirby. I'd just like to see transparency and accountability, and I'd like some questions answered, whether you do it here at public comment or whether you do it some other time. I'd still like, I think I have a right to those, to that information that I asked many months ago. You know, we have 6,318 children, kids, kindergarten through 12th grade, and watching you guys do what you did tonight with the dance thing, I think there needs to be a lot more of that. You've got 6,318 children in the Barstow Unified School District. I'd like to see each one of them have one of those little gold certificates, because it's, I think it really builds self-esteem, and that's what we want with our children. Now, we're going to talk about code enforcement, also known as House Nazis, the way Mary's running it. You know, what I don't understand is, and this is an invitation for everybody, explain to me, go drive through the Santa Fe Mobile Home Park and look at all the trash in there, all the people just, I mean, it's a circus over there. And then for them to go after the Browns, I mean, it's just like, all of a sudden, I got a little crumb over here, and the other guy's got pie all over his face, but they're going to get on my crumb on my little mustache. I mean, it's just, it's beyond words. What they're doing at the Santa Fe Mobile Home Park, is that, is that the one the railroad bought? Does anybody know? Is that the one the railroad bought? And is that why they're able to get away with that? Because I went in there, and it's just, it's beyond me. And if a guy has an acre of land, how come he can't have a container, a brand-new container on there? I mean, they can build a garage, but he can't have a container? It just, it just takes a lot of discipline to maintain your sanity in a mad situation. You know, how could we allow Mary to manipulate code enforcement the way she has? I think somebody needs to get an education and get her the hell out of there, because she's, she's a nightmare. Also, I want to talk about the Muslims. The Muslims, I wish you guys, as leaders, would take a look and get on the internet and do some research about what's really going on in the world.
Thank you, Mr. Snell.
Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Hernandez.
Thank you. I'm wondering, can you give an update on the Humane Society? What's going on? And how are they doing? And also, an update on the senior citizen contract? How is that doing? And also, the ADA? I'm not letting that go. And I'd also like to know why Section 7 is not on the five-year measure I project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Our next speaker is Ms. Gemma Day.
Good evening. My name is Gemma Day. I'm the president of the Barstow Police Officers Association. I'm here tonight regarding Unit 3 contract negotiations. This isn't just about our salary, it's about public safety. Our officers are one of the lowest paid, according to a study that you guys paid for. As a result, your officers are leaving for more competitive agencies. It takes thousands of dollars and approximately two years to replace that officer. Your officers who stay are forced into mandatory overtime, working back-to-back shifts and carrying unsustainable workloads. An understaffed and exhausted police department cannot respond as quickly, investigate as thoroughly, or remain sharp during critical incidences. That puts every resident at risk. Response times can increase, and when criminals see a department struggling to keep up, crime will also increase. We're asking for a fair contract, one that allows us to recruit and retain qualified officers so we can respond to our officers quickly and effectively. We're asking for a seamless, reasonable, and timely negotiation process. While our officers dedicate their lives to the city, they wait weeks for counteroffers hoping for a competitive contract. We're asking for open communication. Missed meetings and avoidance is unacceptable. The men and women of this department have always stood for this community, doing all they can with limited resources. Tonight, I ask the council to support us. Invest in your police officers, prioritize public safety, and enable us to protect Barstow. Without a strong public safety, the city's future projects cannot be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Day.
Our next speaker is Mr. Jacob Gotti.
Welcome, Mr. Gotti.
How you doing, sir? Good morning, or good evening. Good evening, members of the community, city officials, and neighbors. I stand before you today with deep concern, not just as someone who cares about public safety, but as someone who cares about the future of Barstow. I am a resident of Barstow. I own a home in Barstow. I own a home in Barstow. I raise a family in Barstow. I'm a veteran, and I'm a current police officer here in the city of Barstow. We are facing a crisis that goes beyond negotiations and pay scales. The city of Barstow is losing the trust of its police officers, and that loss is not just a contract dispute, it's a warning sign. A warning that those sworn to protect the city feel unsupported, undervalued, and underheard. For too long, our officers have worked under a contract that fails to reflect the respect they have served. While the jobs growing more demanding, and more dangerous, and more complex, the city's response has been silence, delays, and offers that fall short of fairness. Let me be clear, this is not just a labor issue, it is a public safety issue. When the men and women in uniform feel disrespected by their own city, morale suffers, recruitment slows, retention drops, and experienced officers leave the city that value their service, leave for cities that values their service. And who pays the price? The public does. Response time increase, neighborhoods see less patrol, community policing becomes harder to sustain, ultimately, the bond between law enforcement and the public begins to erode. Barstow officers are not asking for luxury, they're asking for dignity. They're asking for a contract that recognizes their sacrifices they make day in and day out to keep all of us safe. The city cannot function without its police, but it also cannot thrive if the officers are treated as expendable. It's time for the city's leadership to step up, not with excuses, but with action, not with vague promises, but with a respectful contract that reflects the essential role for our officers. We are not here to create division, we are here for accountability, and to remind our leaders that behind every badge is a human being, a mother, a father, a son, and/or a daughter, who deserve to know that their city stands with them and not against them. Barstow deserves better, our officers deserve better, and the public deserves a police department that is empowered, supported, and fully equipped to serve. When my family calls 911 and they need emergency services, I want an officer that is rested, and that is capable to take on the task, and that has backing officers coming to support them. I don't want to lose them to other departments that are paying them more money, when we could've just helped them out in that manner. Let's fix this together. Thank you all for your time, and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Gotti.
Our next speaker is Ms. Rhoadbeardshire.
Welcome, Ms. Beardshire.
Hi, Mayor, Council. I am here to thank the city for hiring Police Chief Christopher Kirby, and for, yes, awesome. I have not spoken to one person who has not been supportive of that decision. And we are here, I'm here with some of my team members, Donna Haverlock, who is a local realtor, and our housing navigator, and Eva O'Neil, who runs our clothing ministry, and also helps out at New Hope Village and Desert Manor with food distribution. So, we met Pat Walsh, and I just want to thank you for bringing him on, the consultant. He reached out to us, and attended an hour-long meeting, and listened to us. Wonderful man. We were all thinking the same thing, "We love you, Pat." So, he just really listened to all the homeless concerns, and some of the things we're doing, and I shared with him what other nonprofits are doing. And it's my understanding, he'll be here for another three months or so, making recommendations to the city on things. So, that is like huge, okay? For people that work in, I know, she hired you, okay? So, like, it's fabulous. We also had good news on our grant from the county, which is a sizable grant, which will help with case management, housing navigation, housing. It goes before the Board of Supervisors October 7. We should probably have that funding before the end of the year. We've been waiting very patiently. We also used that grant to leverage to get another grant, which is a very exciting grant. We can't release that, because they have to make a public announcement first. We're working on workforce development, we have a commercial kitchen. I came tonight from serving 150 meals. We work with Desert Manor, the Senior Center, and recently, Los Domingos gave us like, I guess they prepared for 800 soldiers, and only 600 showed up, so we had meals galore. And we, that food would go to the landfill. So, we recover that food, and we serve our neighbors. We also got selected to participate in the IEHP fundraising cohort, so we'll be writing more grants, working with the city, and other nonprofits to help our homeless in our community. And I just want to thank you. Thank you, City Manager, thank you, Council, for your support.
Thank you, Mrs. Beardshire.
Our next speaker is Mr. Ted Weisma.
Welcome, Mr. Weisma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you. I really appreciate it, and I'm sure Mr. Davis appreciated, that you went there and gave a proclamation for this 100-year-old veteran, who served in World War II. You know, for a moment there, I thought he was French, the way he treated one of the council members. But the thing is, obviously, he appreciated you being there. And I think everybody that was there appreciated the council showing up and doing the proclamation. So, thank you again on that. I'll get back to World War II in just a minute. My other thing I'd like to comment on is that I've been up here a number of times, asking why you can't afford a water fountain out in front for the citizens? For a while there, you at least, you had bottles of water, but now we're back to nothing out there? Somewhere in your funding, you should be able to find money for a water fountain out there for the public. Beyond that, let's get back to World War II. What happened in World War II, and why? It's a certain person that said he was gonna make Germany great again, and he did that by building up the greatest military force the nations knew at the time. He invaded Poland, and because he said that the Jews were all bad people, he had them segregated from everybody else, and put in detention areas, called ghettos, as well as other areas. Eventually, these people were moved out of those ghettos, and most of them were never heard from again. Remember history, it's gonna get repeated again. Be very careful in remembering that. During that time period, there were three types of Christians in Poland. There are those that supported the invasion and the segregation of these people, there are those that did nothing, whether that they believed it was right, or they were just afraid of what was gonna happen to them if they spoke up against it. Then there's a third group, unfortunately, the very smallest of the three groups, that actually went out and did their best to fight against it. My question of you is who you are? What kind of Christian are you? What kind of Christians represent this council? Are you gonna attack individual citizens for speaking up against this? I know some here are quite happy to attack individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisma.
Our next speaker is Ms. Marsha Weisma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, it was a wonderful week for the Veterans Home. We do have two 100-year-old centarians living there. Mr. Davis had a wonderful 100th birthday. It was all due to the Desert Dispatch for circulating all their customers, written, printed, and online. It was a very special day, because all the city council came. Ms. Mary Bell got short notice, got everything ready quickly, the mayor got it, they all arrived with smiles and cards. One person from the city council brought a very special card, 3D-dimensional happy birthday card. Sitting where I was, I saw Mr. Davis's eyes light up, and as my husband mentioned, he thought he might've been a Frenchman. He grabbed a hold of, excuse me, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem Barbara Rose's hand, kissed her hand. She did not get embarrassed, and she did not pull away, she took it all in stride. Barbara, that was very nice of you, very mature. Now, I asked today how many cards that he's got, and they said it's getting up to, close to 2,000 cards. This is from a lot of the schoolchildren, and they're from here all the way down beyond Hesperia. So, this is pretty neat. I hope that we will use the veterans at the Veterans Home. They do have a bus, they could be in our parade, there can be lots of things coming up this following year. But I think this is a wonderful thing, Ms. Rose, for you to share with your grandchildren, who has been, they're had hand-kissed by 100-year-old person, a gentleman, on his birthday. And I believe your youngest grandson's gonna appreciate it the most when he grows up. And I also have a comment for Mr. Tex. Thank you for what you're doing. The cowboy with the camera in his hand has dropped his camera recently. Put it back in your hand, please, and get going, Mr. Tex. And for the people who want to camp out in our bathrooms, well, that happened. But the one-time, two-time, three-time, four-time errors of our staff really put a damper on our parties that we've had in the park. I hope that that can be prevented, and perhaps it can be, but if the staff does not commit and put the stuff out to the people before they leave on Thursday, we get locked restrooms, and Mr. Tex gets very, very upset. But he should be. Thank you, Mr. Tex. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mrs. Weisma.
And our last speaker is Mr. Jim Brown.
Welcome, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Chris Kirby. I didn't like that y'all hired him, but I talked to him. And I talked to him for two hours, me and Virginia, and we discussed a lot of things. And what happened in the past, what happened with Espinoza. Chief Kirby is a hard person. He didn't say hardly anything, but his body language said a lot. And, what I mean by that is that, things I told him, things I showed him, he didn't say much, but his body language said a lot. And so, I told him that I would give him a chance, since you hired him. So I said, "I would give him a chance." He asked me, "Mr. Brown, just give me a chance." And I said, "Yes, I would. I would give you a chance." And I can call him, he calls me back, and so far, you know, he's doing good. But now, with these officers back here, saying that the morale is bad and everything, but you gotta give him a chance. So his officers gotta give him a chance to make Barstow better. So you gotta give the captain a chance, since he's there, you gotta give him a chance. And the people in the police department, like I said, I'm gonna say it again, give them a chance, because y'all hired him. And so, that's what the people of Barstow gotta go along with. That was y'all's decision. So I'm gonna give him a chance.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
We have no more comment.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to public hearings. We have one, item number six, we're gonna reopen the adoption of Resolution Number 5236-2025 to disestablish Public Improvement District 83-1. Staff's recommended action, reopen the public hearing, discuss and adopt the attached Resolution Number 5236-2025 to disestablish PID 83-1, which is Exhibit A. Number two, direct staff to record the resolution against the affected properties, and take any additional steps necessary to formally disestablish PID 83-1. City Manager, Ms. Clayton.
I would like to introduce City Attorney Summers and Community Development Director Heldrich to provide this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Ms. Clayton. The item before you is, second on this one, previously the council adopted a resolution setting the hearing, now we are at the hearing. The item is to adopt a resolution disestablishing Public Improvement District 1983-1. PID 83-1 was established back in 1985 with approval by affected property owners. It assessed landowners in West Barstow to pay for the cost of providing certain sewerage improvements, wastewater improvements, and related work, piping and sewer extensions. The district concluded all of the required facilities, constructed those back in the 1980s. There are no outstanding debts, there are no remaining funds, with the exception of approximately $160 out of about $700,000 total that was collected, $160 owed to the city from the county. Staff recommends still disestablishing the district, and writing off the $160, as it's effectively uncollectible. The recommendation to disestablish it is tied to the fact that the district has concluded the purpose for which it was established, sewer improvements are built, and there are no remaining facilities to be built, and its continuing existence on the books complicates the city structure for the general plan update. So staff's recommendation on that front is to disestablish it. In terms of process, the item was originally brought to the council in May, but was pulled to obtain additional information, including that confirmation that the amount owed is only the $160 out of about $700,000 originally collected. The council then, on July 15, adopted the resolution setting this hearing, and this hearing is tonight. And we've also mailed notices to every affected property owner, published a notice in the newspaper as well of the public hearing. And with that, staff are available for any questions, and I'll also, can't see around the flowers. I'll also add to Mr. Heldrich, if he has any comments as well. Staff's recommendation is to hold the public hearing, take any comments or objections, and then, staff would recommend adopting the resolution to disestablish the district, having it concluded its mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. I see no requests or questions from council. With that, I will reopen the public hearing at 8:21 PM. Madam Clerk, any requests to speak?
Yes. Our first speaker is Mr. Ted Weisma.
Welcome, Mr. Weisma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're saying that the fees were collected, and everything was done with the money that was collected. I'd like to know, are those fees still being collected? And if so, will this disestablishment mean that there's gonna be money back into the pockets of the landowners that were paying these fees? And I'd like to know where the boundaries were of quote-unquote "West Barstow." Where exactly was this area? Has it covered all of, everything, west of Barstow Road, or where? Bottom line, I guess, is I'm asking, am I affected in any way by this? And those that are affected one way or the other, is it gonna be a positive effect on them? Or what? Just, you're not very clear on how this is gonna impact the citizens at all. I saw nothing here about the funds that were supposedly fully collected, and if they still are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisma.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Hernandez.
I'd like a clarification by the city attorney. When you said "west of Maine," you're talking about the Linwood area, aren't you, specifically? And you're not talking about Section 7, because that's West Main also. So, can you clarify that, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
We have no more comment on this item.
With no, this being a public hearing, do I have anyone wishing to approach in favor or opposed? Seeing no one approaching, I will close the public hearing at 8:23 PM. And I ask staff to answer the questions. I think this one will answer both the area affected. Can you kind of give us a better description of the area affected?
I'll start.
Oh, yeah, if you want to cover the area, then I can cover the other points.
Yeah, so the, the location is in Linwood. And I know, so that's for Mr. Hernandez. The second part is to Mr. Weisma's questions. So, back in the 1980s, the city did the assessment district to establish and put in sewer in that location. So what happened is the, they do an assessment and, and the property owners pay into it. The city did the obligation of putting in the sewer main. Property owners then connected to the sewer main if they chose to do so. The, and the fees were established and they were paying that as, as they installed, or we installed it. There was a shortfall in installing that entire sewer in the city general, the city's general fund subsidized it 700, approximately $700,000. And over time, we added that to the assessment in the tax, your tax roll. And that's why, like Mr. Summers was referring to, there's $160 that has not been collected over the total of the $700,000 that the city put up, in addition to the property owners. And that's where, and we might get that $160 on the next, you know, they do, whenever you pay your property taxes, it's twice a year. And so, we might be getting our $160 back in the next rollover. So, that's the clarification of what, what that entails. And I'll throw it to Matt to clarify anything else.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Heldrich. A couple of further points, yes. This is West Barstow, not West Section 7. There's a lot of areas that are named West something. So, absolutely understood to note that for the record, not West Section 7. That's a different conversation for a different agenda item. This is the West, the Linwood area of West Barstow. And then, there are no current impacts for any property owner except whoever owes the $160. That'll get collected through the county if they ever pay their tax bill. And for any given owner, you either received a notice in the mail or you didn't. So if you didn't receive a notice in the mail, then you are not affected at all. If you did receive a notice in the mail, then you are affected in that this will be taken off of the items that are listed on your tax bill, but there's not any, it's a zero-dollar item at present because assessments were all imposed before, with the sole exception of whichever owner owes the $160. So no impact if you didn't get a notice. And if you did get a notice, no impact to your present property because the assessments were already collected before. All owners that were affected, of course, will have to continue paying their monthly sewer bills. That's standard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. We'll go back to council for questions. I see none. So we'll go for a motion and then discussion. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez, a second by Councilmember Noble. Is any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
And motion passes unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our consent calendar public comment. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the governing board on all matters on the consent calendar. Speakers are asked to limit their comments on all consent items to three minutes or less. All requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. And I'll remind the public that seven and 10 were pulled, so you will be given a chance, if you signed up for those items, you'll be a chance to speak at that time. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have on item 11, Ms. Kathleen Williams.
My name's, hold on one second. I should have took my retainer out. I just got them, so I didn't want to slur while I was talking. So I have a nonprofit called Baby So Special, and I see a lot of new faces. My son Caleb was born with half a heart, 50 surgeries, 10 open hearts. I lost him almost 10 years ago. So I started Baby So Special 19 years ago, and I help out families with disabled children with like gas cards, food cards, lodging, you know, whatever they need during the journey of having a child that's born with a disability. And also, we help, in the unfortunate event that you lose your child, we help with final arrangements. My son Caleb lived to be nine and a half, 50 surgeries, 10 open hearts. And so, we do Light Up the Night in honor of his actual birthday. So we have bounce houses, face painters, photo booth. We have a glow-in-the-dark run, so it's a 5K run. We also try to bring in different people in the community to come and have like, like resource booths. We have regular vendors. It's just a really great event. All special needs children and foster youth are free to our events. He, I know Mr. Snell mentioned how many children we have in our school district. Well, I found out last year, we have 1,100 special needs kids from severe all the way to an IEP. So that's almost like a third of the school district, which I make free tickets for every single one of them to come and just be a part of this event. And it's just such a great time. We have a special dance group coming from Rancho Cucamonga that's going to end the evening. And I was asking, because they do blow fire, if maybe we could do that at the end for Caleb's birthday. I don't know, it'd be great. We just encourage, you know, people to come out and just support the community, to support the special needs, you know, children in, in our area. We don't do a lot of things here for them. So we, how do we know as a society how to support these children and these families if we're never exposed to them and if we're never around them? So I think it's really important that Baby So Special does what we do. And I would just hope to see you there. It's going to be a great time.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, and welcome. I missed your welcome.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Hernandez, speaking on item 11 and item 12.
Thank you, sir. Main thing is on item 11, I'd like to see something come in saying who was actually helped. It would be nice. This has been gone for many years, but nobody's ever mentioned who was helped with the money that was collected. On item 12 is the water line through the sewer. My understanding is that we had a lawsuit pending with the water company. Cody told me that. And then I found out at the last meeting, we don't have a lawsuit pending. So how do we know that they're going to follow up and do what they need to do when they've stuck us for so many years with doing bad patchwork? And we have policies and we don't enforce them? My question is, who's going to make sure they do the right thing by us? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
That is all the comments we have on these items. And with that, I'll go ahead and read consent.
Thank you.
Item eight is the minutes for the joint special meeting held July 1st, 2025 at 6:00 PM. The recommended action is to approve minutes as presented. Item nine is the minutes for the joint special meeting held July 15th, 2025 at 5:30 PM. The recommended action is to approve minutes as presented. Item 11 is a community promotional fund application from Baby So Special. The recommended action is that the city council approve a community promotional fund in-kind donation in the amount of $3,000 for the waiver of fees for Baby So Special for Light Up the Night Glow-in-the-Dark 5K Neon Color Run scheduled for October 11th, 2025 at the Robert, Robert A. Sessions Memorial Sports Park. Item 12 is the adoption of a Resolution 5242-2025 of the city council of the city of Barstow, ratifying the city manager, director of emergency services proclamation of his existence of a local emergency due to a sewer main line break and concluding the local emergency. The recommended action is one to adopt Resolution 5242-2025, ratifying and confirming the proclamation of the existence of a local emergency, and two, declaring that the local emergency has concluded. And that is the end of the consent calendar.
Thank you. I see no requests to speak from council members. Okay, I just had Mayor Pro Tem inter, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem, questions?
Well, so the question, can I, can I ask the question of Baby So Special's CEO to come back up so she can let the public know what I already know, so that Mr. Hernandez understands hundreds, how many you have helped? Can I ask her that question?
Well, all events come back for after a presentation event, and I would ask that she please come back and do that at that time, at your after-event presentation.
Will there be a moment where I can make a comment on any of these?
We can have discussion afterwards, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Seeing no one else, I'll call for a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez, a second by Councilmember Noble, discussion by council. Mayor Pro Tem Rose.
Thank you, Mayor. So, my discussion would be that anybody that's part of this community and that has paid attention to Baby So Special would understand, or if you're involved with the K-12 program or any special needs children, not within, just within Barstow, but in the surrounding communities, this amazing person that just presented and her son, who is, this is done in, in honor of, has touched hundreds, if not thousands, of lives through her own contributions, through other contributions. But I personally know of many families that she has helped, no questions asked. And I don't believe that we should put out a list for the privacy of the children that we are helping. We're not there to exploit them. We're there to help them. When I say "we," the community supports Baby So Special. She's there 110, 150% purely to help those children because she knows, as a single mother, what she experienced with her, with her baby, Caleb. And I'll say his name because I remember him. And I remember the, the emotions that come with, or came with this. And this mother created something so wonderful, so special, and there is no discrimination. She helps everybody and anybody. And to provide a list would exploit the children. It's how she helps. She's accountable on the monies in a different way, but not to provide a list to the general public of which child has been helped and how much. She not only provides a lot of things, but during Christmas, a single mom that has a special needs student or child, she helps. Not only does she give the, the special needs child presents, but she gives the siblings presents and the mother. So, I encourage, Mr. Hand, Hernandez, if you'd like to get more involved and under, and maybe to get a better understanding of what this amazing event is year after year, show up if you haven't already and have a conversation with the mother. She wrote a book, I think one at least. I have that book. So, yeah, so I just wanted to say that. I just want her to be her voice right now to say she's amazing and what she does for our children is amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rose. Councilmember Williams.
Yeah, I, I saw your expression, and I don't think Mr. Hernandez meant that in any harmful way. As we give taxpayers dollars away, then we're going to be transparent on that. What you do is amazing. Mayor Pro Tem is 100% right. You are an amazing person. We all love you and we all appreciate you. I don't believe Mr. Hernandez's comment was to hurt your feelings. And it hurts me to see you hurt. So, please, don't take that the wrong way. I, I don't believe he meant that, okay?
I've never taken it that way.
I, we, we're not, we, we support you 100%. We love you. You're doing a great job, and we're very proud to have you in our community, okay? All right.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Yes, I, I just want to say that it is, it was practiced in the past when we do this to have an after-event presentation where you do come back and you will be on the agenda, which means you're not limited to three minutes, because you would probably need three hours to tell us what you do. But please, but, but please don't take three hours. So I'm going to request now that we do follow up after the event and we do get Kathleen back to do her presentation. Also, if you could see Ms. Bierschir there, I, they need your contact number for our resource list, because you do transportation. One of the things you do too is transportation for kids in need, and we need to get that on our resource list. Also, changing the subject here, on item nine, minutes, page 67, I'm going to have a correction. It says that I attend the military affairs meeting, and this will be third section up from the bottom. It says I attend it as the ASOA member. It's AUSA, which stands for Association of the United States Army. I attend the military affairs as a member of AUSA. I wanted to clarify that because Councilmember Noble always gives the update. I do attend it, but I'm not on that committee. With that, I see no more discussions, so I'll call for the, Mayor Pro Tem Rose.
Mayor, thank you. So with the understanding that I can also ask for the correction in the minutes, because I, I actually pulled it, but we can do that during discussion, correct?
Yes.
So if I, if I may just do it right now, then we can.
We would have to go back and amend. The agenda's been amended, so it'll be fast.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, I'll call for the vote.
So the motion to approve items eight, nine, 11, and 12, with the correction to item nine on page 67 correcting the AUSA, passes unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you. With that, we're going to go on to deferred items. We had two. Item number seven, let me get to it. Item seven is the minutes of joint special meeting, June 17th, 2025 at 5:30 PM. And the recommended action is to approve the minutes as presented. Mayor Pro Tem, you pulled item seven. Did you want to let us know what we need to do there?
Thank you, Mayor. So I was just questioning, and it's on page 21, under Mike Lewis. He spoke of the MOU, and I believe I have the, the answer. Should MOU be, some people would not, if they're reading it, would they understand what a MOU is? Memorandum of Understanding. It's also referred to as their contract, but do we normally just put MOU or should it be written out?
Sorry, one second. What page was that again?
Page 21.
Thank you. Trying to get it to click up.
It just said Tom Lu, he spoke of the MOU, Memorandum of Understanding. Do we normally just call it a MOU and anybody that's reading the minutes would understand that, or should we spell it out?
Typically, we match the language used by the, by the person who spoke. No objection to adding spoke of their union MOU adding, ending, adding that to make it clear.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I see no other questions from council. Madam Clerk, were there any requests to speak on this item?
I have no comment on item seven.
With that, I'll call for a motion in a second. Nobody's in the queue. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
You have a second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Noble, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Rose. Any discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote.
And the motion to approve item seven as amended with correction to the MOU, writing out Memorandum of Understanding, passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our second deferred item was item number 10. Item 10, ratification of accounts payable expenditures. Recommended action- Recommended action, approve and ratify expenses as audited checks number 99929 through check number 100331 totaling $8,718,531.68, and wires number 1157 through 1171 totaling $535,366.97 per the agency breakdown below. City, $8,513,238.56. Fire, $740,660.09. Successor Agency, zero, for a grand total of $9,253,898.65. City Manager, Ms. Clayton. Well, I'm sorry. Who pulled this? Who pulled it? Okay, you're not in the queue, but since you pulled it, could you go ahead, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of questions. So, on page 82, page 82, and it would be check number 100079 payable to Downtown Liquor in the amount of $328. It says it's a duplicate payment. Can somebody explain to me what that was for?
I'm looking to Director Harris. It is for $328. I believe that we will have to pull this information and get back to you as we don't have access to the system to pull it immediately.
So, is it possible, like, when we are at the city council meeting, so that Ms. Harris could get access to the system where she sits off a laptop or something? In future?
In the future, yes. So, I have access here, but it's, it's actually fairly slow. So, I'm not able to pull the information immediately. So, and some of the information that's required is not necessarily in the system. So, I would need to pull, like, original documents to see if there is a reason why the duplicate occurs. More than likely, it has to do with the reissuance of a check. If there was a lost check or a damaged check, we would reissue the payment. But what I'm seeing here is not explaining that clearly.
And what would, what would we be paying for from Downtown Liquor?
Oh, that information I don't have. I would have to pull original documents for that.
It may be the case that it's a repayment of a double business license payment, noting that the prefix is BL and then the license number.
Correct.
Obviously, staff has to confirm that.
Yes.
But that may be the case, that it's a duplicate payment. So, they paid their business license fee twice, and we refunded the extra payment. But I would need staff to confirm that, if that's the case.
Yes, and that, that does, oh, go ahead.
That, those numbers, the BL is the business licenses. And what happens is, is that we mail out their business license renewal forms. And sometimes when the applicants, whenever they own multiple businesses, sometimes they make duplicate payments also. And we just cash the checks whenever they come in. And so, whenever we catch it in the system that, hey, this was input twice, then we issue a reimbursement as well. So, we give them their money back if they've paid double.
So, when we see BL, it's for business license?
Correct.
Thank you. I appreciate that. My next question, I only have a few more. On page 89, check number 100130, PERMA. And if it looks to me $3,900, and lots of money, I, I have a question. I know that we're paying, but Ms. Clayton, are we, are we still working on a process to mitigate and, for training and helping with workman's comp?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. My final questions would be that I, I don't see K-Duck here, though I know that their contract is out and they continue to run showtime or airtime for the city in English and Spanish on their two radio stations. But I don't see them on this bill. Is there a reason why?
That is correct. We have asked them for a formal proposal, as we did not receive a formal proposal for the evaluation of their renewal, contract renewal, and exactly what the services are. So, that, that's why they're not on this.
And, but you've, you've reached out to them?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And the only one other thing that I didn't miss, and this is for Matthew Summers, I am not seeing billing from your firm. Are you giving your services away? Why do I see, why do I not see a bill in here?
We bill every month to the city roughly on the 15th of the month. The Finance Department was behind in making some payments. They have thankfully come up to correct, up to current. I believe you'll see three months of payment on the next warrant register. And we'll include information. About half of that is reimbursable projects, as we're running about half reimbursable these days. But that's why there aren't any payments, because we, we extended credit to the city without interest as a courtesy, given our long relationship with the city. But we are happy to hear that I think some process improvements have been put in place so that that won't be, won't be such an irregular cash flow.
And I appreciate you asking that because that would have been my next, my follow-up question. But it may not be you. It could be, or your firm. And it's good that your firm can float that kind of money for three months, a very successful firm. But if it were somebody else, and we were three months behind, they would be charging us interest.
Oh, yes. And our, our contract does provide for interest, but as noted, we waived it as a courtesy. Others may not be so generous.
So, there's a process in place that we will get these expedited sooner, Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Is there a reason why we were late?
I would have to defer to Director Harris, if she has any information. I am not certain on this, and I could get that information and bring it back to you if she doesn't have that right now.
So, Finance has a policy to pay payments that have been received in AP within a certain timeframe. Our payroll, our AP cycle is every two weeks. Once that invoice is received in AP, we complete that process. So, if that payment was delayed, we, we must be updating some policies within, within the city to make sure that those payments are on time. But we are continuing to look at our processes. We're going to set clocks when those invoices are posted through email or however the means are, the electronic means. We receive invoices actually in several different means, electronically, paper, and likewise. And they all have to go through their processing through different departments for sign-off. But once they get to the Finance Department, they are usually paid within two weeks.
Thank you for that.
And I will add that there is some information on those bills that have to be redacted. So, I understand that that was, I believe that might have been part of the process with this, this passed. Not necessarily three months, but we did have some evaluation of how it should be processed after I started. And I think that we have that completely identified at this time.
Thank you. And once again, Mr. Summers, thank you, and thank you to your firm for, for always having the city at the forefront.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Williams.
It's my favorite time. This is going to be the Chris Eldredth. Page 79, check number 10047, High Desert Support Services. It's a big lot of money right there. How much, how much, can you tell us how much we make off of that?
I don't know the exact dollar amount.
Yes.
I don't even know what the check number is, or the check dollar amount is, but...
It's $774,000.
So, the city makes 3% off of every single bill we process for Fort Irwin.
Yeah, thanks for making us some money. We appreciate it. Thank you so much. That was an easy one, see? Everybody was all worried. Check number, page number 83, 100, check number is 10091. It is the yellow striping paint. Thank you so much to the city of Barstow for, you know, painting those lines out there. Looks beautiful out there. And it cost you taxpayers $4,000. So, I hope you're happy with that, because I am. Mayor Protem beat me to it. I tell you, she's, she was pretty good today on this one. But we'll go a little, little deeper on this than, than what we got. First of all, page 89, 100126. I, I got to give some credit here. I love it when we're talking about the lease. I do believe this is the lease for the vehicles, correct? Anybody seen that? Or me, I'm just going too fast. That's the lease, correct? I, I want to tell you, I see, we want to talk about transparency. This is an example of Measure Q. Paid $12,000 for cars, and the General Fund paid for $13,000, correct?
I'm not 100% certain which fund these came from, other than the Measure Q.
Well, the other one doesn't say it up there, so I'd have to say that's General Fund. Am I correct?
It could be wastewater or...
Or police. He's talking about police, so it is, yes.
Okay, because that's the transparency we're talking about, is it split 50-50. Now, what I've got a question here is, how many officers do we have in Measure Q? Eight?
I believe there's eight, yes.
How many cars does $12,000 leases?
Most likely, there would be eight, if they're for the Measure Q officers.
Okay. And so, General Fund is $13,000. I love it. That's exactly what we should be seeing. So, I want to commend you on that. I, I am, I was extremely impressed with that, and I love it. Now, my next question is going to be for the, page 89, check number 100130. The Mayor Protem beat me to this. Someone explain to me what the, what the, well, I'm going to have the, I'm going to, I'm going to direct this to the city attorney. PERMA is at $3.4 million. Tell me, why is it so high?
So, we've seen, and I'll, I'll add a comment, and I'll also add to Ms. Clayton as well. We've seen a significant increase in our PERMA liability insurance costs. For those who are not familiar with it, PERMA is the Public Entity Risk Management Authority. It's the, for lack of a better word, insurance, although legally it's not insurance, risk pool sharing entity that we belong to, together with other public agencies around California, that share risk among the agencies. And it functions like insurance. And our premiums, which is what these payments are, have risen significantly over the last several years, reflecting increased costs in workers' compensation cases and in some police liability cases, and in some general liability cases, and some employment liability cases that we have experienced in the recent years. And I'll, I'll ask Ms. Clayton, through the mayor, to add further comments, as desired.
I, I don't have any further comments. I can answer any additional questions.
What was it two years ago?
I would want staff to confirm. I believe it was about a million less, but I need staff to confirm the precise figures.
That's approximately correct.
So, we, we've increased it a million dollars. Okay. It's funny, I never got that answer when I was sitting out there, but now I get it. I love it. I love it. Oh, it's another one. Page 95, check number 100183. To Public Works and everybody else, thank you so much for the clay. Unbelievable, the amount of money we're spending to fix our ball fields. That just tells you right there, we do care. You're going to spend $24,000 on clay, which we needed, as I don't think you've spent that money ever before for the amount of clay. So, I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Page 100, check number 100226. Explain to me where the funds came for the cemetery restrooms.
I believe that is ARPA funding, so American Rescue Plan Act funding, as a pass-through from the county.
Someone tell me why it costs $394,000 for some bathrooms?
I will defer to Director Eldredth to answer that.
So, the, the restrooms that get installed are pre-manufactured restrooms. They order them through one of two companies that produce these. One's in Idaho, I believe, and the other one, I don't know the location. But you buy these pre-done restrooms, and they meet ADA. They meet all the requirements, seismic ratings and stuff in Port California. And that's the ones that are, they basically put the plumbing in the ground. They have a crane. The restroom comes, and they literally take it off the truck, set it down, and then about another week of work, and those things are operational. So, that's the ones that were installed out there at the cemetery with the county ARPA funding.
$394,000 for some bathrooms? How many, we got 10 of them out there?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't believe it's 10 of them. I think there was, I don't know how many there are. I know there's a men's and a women's. The, what it is, though, is, obviously, we pay California prevailing wage as well for any Public Works project that we do. So, you are paying a premium with Davis Bacon Wages in, to install those. Luckily, it was the county's money.
Well, that's good news. Okay, I guess I'm going to the cemetery tomorrow. All right, appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. I see no more requests, questions of staff. Did we have any public comment for item number 10?
Yes, we have one. This is Teresa Tank.
Welcome, Mrs. Tank.
Thank you. Good evening. I saw something on the voucher list that stood out to me. On packet page 81, check number 100070 paid on 7/3 for $55,572. States Burt Tech was paid for the rehab of 2340 West Main Street, which was the old city shelter. And I also see that the city has paid for utilities as well. Is this rehab for the city shelter that I thought was done, like, before March with the cleaning bill of about $1,800 and the modular rental? And if not, what was rehab for? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tank. Was that the only request?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll bring it back to council for questions. I don't see anyone in the queue. Staff, would you be able to answer the, I know the council received an email explaining that, but could you explain it to the public?
This was for the rehab of the Burt Tech building that the city was occupying for animal control. But I will, this was prior to me beginning employment here, so I'll refer to Director Eldredth to expand on that answer.
Thank you. Yes, the rehab was for the front office building at Burt Tech. Whenever the city started the, the animal control business or the housing of animals, we partnered with the nonprofit to occupy that space. They decided to move unbeknownst to the city, as far as I know. They moved animals into the front office building instead of just the rear building, which then damaged the front building. Burt Tech walked the property and did an inspection, and ultimately asked the city who would be repairing this, and otherwise they, we needed to vacate. So, with that, the, the city manager at the time notified Burt Tech in, in writing that we would take care of the building and put it back into the shape that we received it. And the city received some, some prices to rehab the facility, and Burt Tech received their own prices. And we decided to go with Burt Tech's price proposal, and we wrote them a check to rehab that front office facility.
Thank you. Mr. Eldredth, Councilmember Williams, questions?
I'm going to try to stay on the top, but what damage was caused for $55,000?
When we walked the property, they used that front building for the cats. It's a T-bar ceiling, so they were missing some T-bar ceilings. So, the cats went in the ceiling. The cats were walking around the facility. They weren't, like, in cages, obviously. They were roaming around. So, basically, in the way you fix that of months of something like that happening, the only way that you could fix it is, is you demo out the flooring. You remove portions of the drywall in the entire facility. And then you bleach it and try to treat it, and then you... to treat it, and then you let it air out, and then you come back in if there's still, you keep going until it doesn't smell. And that means removing ceiling tiles, that remove, it just keeps, the list just keeps going until it's back to normal after the cleaning.
Is there a way we can get a total cost of what that, that whole project cost us to be able to do that? Because that, that's on top of the money that we've already used that. I'd like a total now of the entire cost for the, that shelter.
I'll second that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Mayor Pro Tem Rose?
Thank you, Mayor. So what funds were used to pay this, Ms. Harris?
This was paid out of the original budget for the animal shelter. I believe it was around nine hundred thousand from last year. This year, we've moved to a contract relationship. So this was paid out of funds from the prior arrangement.
So when we were using Burt Tech, did we, did we have a contract with them?
The Burt Tech facility was rented to the city. I believe it was for a dollar, I think it was a month, or, I'm not sure if it was a month or a year.
I think it was a dollar.
I think it was a dollar a year.
But was there a contract? I mean, obviously, when, you know, we mess things up, we're liable. But was there a contract, Mr. Summers, in regards to this?
My recommendation is that we had a dollar-a-year lease, or dollar-a-month lease that required us to repair the facility with Burt Tech. And then I believe we also had some sort of a contract with the underlying operator who went, had the cats running around. But I'm not sure the full history there. That was several city managers ago, two or three now. We can get a further accounting of that history there.
So are, so it's fair to say that the dollar turned into fifty-five thousand, plus whatever the total cost is going to be? Ms. Clayton, I recommend you get up to speed on this, because this is just, it's just a disaster what occurred, and money that we should have been putting towards our humane society. It's just a waste. My next question was, I, Mayor, did, I thought I heard you say that there was a mail, an email sent out on this? If so, was there an email sent out for that? And when was it sent out?
It was sent this afternoon, when I received the, after I received the invoice copy. And once I got to, out of meetings and discovered that I had the email, but I don't believe I had it for very long before I forwarded it on to the full council.
Okay, that's probably why a couple of us haven't seen it, maybe not all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Rose, see no more questions from council. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez, a second by Councilmember Noble. So before I call for the vote, I'll just clarify, yes, I was reading my emails just before the meeting, so that's the reason I read it. It came out late afternoon. And I'll call for the vote.
And the motion for consent, item ten, passes unanimously, five-zero.
Thank you. That completes our deferred items. We'll move on to business action items. Item number thirteen, the BFPD Resolution Number seven-five dash two zero two-five to recruit and employ a grant-funded Fire Division Chief, Community Risk and Resilience Officer, Emergency Manager, as a member of the Barstow Fire Protection District, two zero two-two Prepare California Jump Start Grant. Recommended action, staff recommends the adoption of the BFPD Resolution Number seven-five-two-zero-two-five for the amount of seven hundred and thirty-two thousand from account number two-one-seven-point-two-one-seven-point-two-one-seven-point-zero-seven-point-seven-four-six, and consider cost allocations expenditures regarding this C A L O E S two-zero-two-four, I'm sorry, two-zero-two-two Prepare California Jump Start Award. City manager, Ms. Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I would like to introduce Chief, Fire Chief Cisneros to provide this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and community. This resolution I'm bringing forward to you is actually kind of a catch-up grant, that was, opportunity that was presented in two thousand and twenty-two. Like stated, it's to gain appropriation for the acquisition of the Fire Division Chief, grant-funded, limited-term position. This approves re-establishment of a Fire Division Chief, which is a limited-term position per the grant. This will, so this position will serve as a Community Risk and Resiliency Officer and Emergency Manager needed for the community. The funding, like I stated, was awarded in two thousand and twenty-two, or actually adopted in two thousand and twenty-two, but also awarded in two thousand and twenty-three per the two thousand and twenty-two CaloOS Prepare California Jump Start Grant. This position will be included within the Barstow Fire Department, or Fire Protection District Fire Administration. A little bit of background regarding this opportunity is, on October third, two thousand and twenty-two, the city council approved, and the fire board approved, the grant participation DOC ID fifty-one thirty. The objective is of this position is to strengthen the community resilience across all community hazards. This grant initially was, could have been up to a million dollars for the resilient staffing and planning, in which we were awarded two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, or two hundred and thirty, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars of that opportunity. And just to give you a heads up, there was fifteen million dollars awarded statewide, and we were able to get seven hundred and thirty-two thousand of that. This also aligns with the state of California, mitigation of preparedness goals for all considered hazards and community risks. The key responsibility for this position is going to be to coordinate with stakeholders to assess community risk and hazard exposure, and lead resilient strategy development for the city and community of Barstow. This also supports mitigation planning and disaster preparedness and recover, recovery of any type of occurrence. This identify, and identify, pursue, and additional funding opportunities, whether it be grant or budgeted items. The strategic value of this adoption will be enhance capacity to manage all natural disasters, human-caused threats, any type of ecological, cyber, or biological risks, and promote whole-community approach to emergency management, which is needed for the community. This also improve readiness, sustainability, and long-term resilience of any actions. The staff recommends that we adopt this and recruit and employ a Fire Division Chief, which is grant-funded, limited-term, which is also going to be known as the Community Risk and Resiliency Officer and the City and Fire District's Emergency Manager. With that being said, this is the end of this presentation, and I'm open for any questions as per the city manager.
Thank you, Chief Cisneros. Questions from council members? Councilmember Williams?
How long does this position last after the grant? And do we start paying that position?
So we have a forecast for the opportunity for the Fire District to kind of parlay this position into what we, in two thousand and twenty-eight, we're going to ask for a Fire Deputy Position, or Fire, Deputy Fire Chief Position. This is actually forwarding the opportunity for us to kind of stair-step to that position in two thousand and twenty-eight. So this is pretty much a pre-forecast to us asking a budget, asking for a budgeted position after the term of the grant, approximately two thousand and twenty-eight.
How long will the grant pay for that position?
Three years is the adopted grant for the total of seven hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Mayor Pro Tem Rose?
Well, this time, Councilman Williams beat me to it, because I was going to ask the same thing. So this is a grant-funded, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, limited term. So when we recruit, the recruitment, I'm assuming, will say that it's a limited term, and it's for three years, because at, at three years, at seven hundred and thirty, what would be the salary, the annual salary? And this, and this is including benefits?
It's going to be a total of probably about thirty-five months' worth of employment upon that three years, so just shy of three years. And so I think HR Director, or Administrative Service Director, Kim Turner, Ms. Turner, kind of stated, I think it was two thousand, two hundred and one thousand a year, I believe, was the full burden cost of the position.
And I believe that was also including the benefits.
Yeah, the full burden rate is about two hundred and one thousand dollars a year for that position.
Which would make sense, because the, it would be the salary plus the benefits. And that would be at forty hours a week?
That's correct. It would be an administrative position within the Fire Administration.
So at the end of the grant, potentially, if the council or the, or if there's no funds to be had, this, whoever is the successor of this position would understand that the position will go away, and not to encroach into the general fund, correct?
That's correct. The job flyer does state that this is a limited-term opportunity, and with a caveat of, of future funding may come with the adoption of any type of future budget.
Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Williams.
Who wrote the grant?
This grant was previously written in two thousand and twenty-two, and it's actually a CaloOS grant, so it came from CaloOS. And I do believe it was Domingo, I believe, was the first author of the grant?
Yes, it was Domingo Gonzalez and Genesis Crank.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Hernandez?
I just want to be assured that the way the, the application for that position, that what we are approving says it is a limited term, because in the past, we have accepted grants, unfortunately, and not had future funding. And I don't want to be in that position ever again. So that's, that's, is the way we're approving it, correct, for that position?
Yes, and how we will ensure that is it will be clearly stated in the offer letter, and what will be documented upon recruitment and hiring of the position. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Mayor Pro Tem Rose?
Thank you. So if approved tonight, when will the application process, when will we be able to see it on our website? Because I also want to make, and I did talk about the job description, and make sure that when we are in, you know, putting it out there, that it's specific. So when would we be able to see this? And in future, would it be possible to add, if this were to come up again, to add to it as documentation, this is how it's going to, to read? But when would you, when do you anticipate, if approved tonight, that it would go to the general public for equal opportunity?
Yeah, we're hoping at least five business days to get it orchestrated and advertised. So hopefully, by the end of Business Week next week, we'll have that advertised on the actual city website, and advertised through all of our recruitment, recruitment aspects, that we can get it out there to the public.
Ms. Clayton, would you be able to get it to the council in an email, what we're going to be putting out there?
Yes, we can get that sent out to council.
Prior to it going to the general public?
Correct, yes.
Do I need a second? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Williams?
Is there going to be, we get this funding right away, or do we have to pay for it and then get the grant money for that position?
This pays as we go. This is a no-match grant, so it's a hundred percent burden on CaloOS, not the city's budget or funding. So we'll bill as we go. We will forward a quarterly cost whenever we have to coordinate with Ms. Crank on, on that coordination.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak from the public?
We do. Our first speaker is Ms. Rhod Beersher.
Welcome, Ms. Beersher.
Thank you. I just, I've been tracking this grant for a couple of years now. And the original grant was to hire a contractor for a climate resilience officer to do the public meetings and assessments for the city, but to ultimately come up with a climate resilience plan that would then, this contractor would write grants. And I just want to make sure that that is one of the deliverables, because the prop for climate bond that was passed in November is billions of dollars, that we would need someone experienced with grant-writing to get that money, and a finalized plan, so that we would be eligible for those funds. So I would, you know, I could do a public record request, but I would like to see the, the rescoping of the grant and what those deliverables are, and they would be included in whoever this fire personnel to have that skill set. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beersher.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Hernandez. He's declined. We have no more comment.
Thank you. With that, I'll bring it back to council for further questions of staff. Councilmember Hernandez? I'm sorry, Councilmember Williams.
This is discussion and questions.
This is questions of staff. Need a motion to go to discussion. Staff, are you able to answer the question by Mrs. Beersher? The deliverables of the grant?
I was not here when this occurred, and I will look to the chief, or if Director Hildreth has any background on how the, the grant intention was shifted in any way?
I could, I'll go ahead.
You go first, then I'll clarify.
I'll jump on this. So we recognize this grant was going unutilized earlier this year, January of this year. So we did seek opportunity to see how we could not default on this grant to compromise any future grant opportunities within the, with opportunities within the district. So this actually has come to our highlight, and we're able to restructure this opportunity, similar to other agencies have done with community resilience officer positions and emergency management positions to address their needs similar to ours. So we got our heads together back in January, re-orchestrated, regained planned. And then up until that point, I didn't know much about it until January of this year. So that's where Mr. Hildreth and I kind of got our heads together to not lose any future opportunity.
Thank you, Chief Cisneros. Mr. Hildreth, did you want to add?
That was pretty good. The only thing I will add is, is that the, whenever the grant was obtained, staff did send out, we worked with CaloOS. We tried to obtain companies to come in and help us with the, the grant. That was the original approach. We were unsuccessful. So during conversations with CaloOS, they made some recommendations to us, because a lot of cities were having difficulties to utilize the money or the funds. And then that's when Chief Cisneros and us, the rest of our staff, started discussing it. And CaloOS actually recommended this approach that we're doing with us, another successful agency. And they put us in contact with that group and said, work with them, they'll explain how it works. And then we've been moving it along. And the governor's office actually is the one that brought it up to us also in a meeting of how important it was for us to utilize these funds. Otherwise, we would be in jeopardy of future grants that the governor's office, or CaloOS, or any state organization would be giving us funds. So that's why it became an extreme priority for us to push this along.
Thank you. And I do have another question from council. Mayor Pro Tem Rose?
Thank, thank you. This is for Chief Cisneros. You weren't here when this grant was written as well, correct, in two thousand and twenty-two?
No, I was not.
But you've done your homework, and you have, you know what you're talking about when you talk about this grant, and I appreciate it. Are, this type of grant, or this kind of position, are they shared at staff meetings?
Internally, with Fire District staff and executive team, yes. And we're just trying to get our head together, and we're trying to compromise a plan, or actually come up with a plan, to where we could actually bring a full product to your guys' approval.
Thank you, and I appreciate you doing your due diligence in getting up to speed on things that were done prior to you being here. So thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more questions from council, I'll call for a motion in a second, and then we can move on to discussion.
All, per my.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez, and a second by Councilmember Noble. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously, five-zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item fourteen, year-end review and amendment of fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, Measure I Capital Improvement Plan, CIP. Staff's recommended action, staff recommends that the city council take the following actions. Number one, approve the necessary adjustments to the Measure I Capital Improvement Projects per Attachment A and associated expenditures and revenues transfer accounts to, from the Measure I Fund two-zero-nine and the Capital Improvement Project CIP Fund four-hundred. the Measure I Fund 209 and the Capital Improvement Project CIP Fund 400. Number two, direct, direct staff to move forward the report to SBCTA, which is the San Bernardino County Transit Authority. City manager, Ms. Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I would like to introduce Director Hildreth to provide this presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor, council. The item we have before you tonight is the Measure I Fiscal Year End Report. We are making an, an adjustment and an amendment to that report, and the reason being, because you've already, we've already done this before, but the reason for the adjustment is, and SBCTA did send over some final invoices for the First Avenue Bridge project. June, we were 100% complete with our, our report, and that's what we submitted. Then in, end of July, we received SBCTA's invoices, not just for one month, but for several months, that they gave, gave to us at the end of July, because we're trying to wrap up the bridge project. What that was for, the invoices are for the project management of the First Avenue Bridge, and it was approximately $125,000 worth of bills. So we are asking for the amendment in the Measure I Year End Report and make those adjustments so that we could pay the bills to SBCTA. And that concludes my report. If you have any further questions, I can answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Hildreth. I see no questions by council. Madam Clerk, do we have any questions from the public?
Yes, I have one. Mr. Mike Hernandez?
Welcome, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, sir. My question is, this $125,000, does this close the bridge out? Are we still paying, or still, will we still be paying on the bridge? And when does it end? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. I'll bring it back to council for questions. Could you answer the question regarding the final payment?
So no, we're not done paying for the First Avenue Bridge. We are finalizing some Measure I with, with this, which is Caltrans as well, some, some billing, and we're actually submitted our request to the CPUC for our $5 million in, in funding that we are awarded for the grant with the CPUC, which covers a lot of our expenditures that the city was responsible for. Heidi is working on all of that. She's been diligently working on that, trying to get some fun, get our funds, you know, allocated to us. But there are some, I'd say probably in the next several months, we will have a, and I can give a, we'll probably give a, a, a wrap-up report on that to council. But basically, we are coming to an end of all of that, but going through the files, going through everything, trying to get every penny that we can, and that's what we're doing right now. But as far as money going out, we've, we've met our obligations, and now we're looking for all the reimbursement funds to come back into the, to the city's fund.
Thank you, Director Hildreth. I see no more questions from council, so I'll call for a motion in a second.
I'll move to approve as presented.
I have a motion by Mayor Potem Rose, a second by councilmember Noble. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for the vote.
And the motion to approve this item passes unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you. Moving on to item 15, Resolution 5241-2025, adopting the 2025, 2026 through 2029, 2030, Measure I Five-Year Capital Improvement Program. Recommended action, staff recommends that the city council enact the following actions. Number one, approve resolution number 5241-2025, adopting the city of Barstow's Measure I Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year 2025, 2026 through 2029, 2030, and waive the full reading. Number two, direct staff to move forward a copy of the adopted resolution to the SBCTA, which is the San Bernardino County Transit Authority. City manager, Ms. Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I would again like to introduce Community Development Director, Chris Hildreth.
Thank you. Mayor, council, the item we have before you tonight is the five-year CIP for Measure I. In order to be eligible for Measure I funds through the San Bernardino County Transit Authority, SBCTA, the city is required to annually adopt a five-year capital improvement program by resolution, which is Attachment A. In, in Attachment A, I wanted to point out, and ironically enough, SBCTA was here tonight to give the, the great news of Measure I. But this, the five-year CIP is a local. It's, there's local and there's regional. The, the gentleman from SBCTA was talking about both. The one that we're, you have in front of you tonight is the five-year CIP, but it's the local Measure I. It is not the big regional funds. That's why you won't see any bridge items on the five-year CIP. The five-year CIP for the local Measure I funds is, is utilized for projects that we have, and that's, that's the ones that you see identified on Exhibit A. As I said before, this is not regional funds. This is the local, and that's why you don't have the bridges on this one. The, this five-year CIP, as you've seen in the previous attach, or previous agenda item, is allowed to be amended throughout the year. So the city staff, once we identify projects, we are allowed to amend it if council gives direction to amend the CIP and project specific. And I can answer any questions that you guys have specifically on the five-year.
Thank you, Director Hildreth. I'm not seeing any questions from the council. I'm sorry, okay. Councilmember Hernandez. Questions, please.
I, I'm confused, because it does have about the bridge, about management. So don't tell me there's no bridge here. There is a bridge here.
So we look at management, whenever we pay for management, so the funding mechanisms, you're not allowed to use certain funds for construction, or you're not allowed to use it for project management. We choose to use our local monies for management. You're not allowed to use it for, or you're not allowed to use the regional for project management, because it's usually a local match whenever you're installing it inside of your jurisdiction or your city. So that's why we're allowed to use our Measure I, or our Measure I local funds to pay for only management of projects, not construction of like a regional project, which is like your, your First Street Bridge, those bigger, larger ones. You would never be able to afford to do a project like that with your local funds. You get your regional funds, and that's how you're able to afford to pay for your grade separations and, and large infrastructure projects. But for the management, you are allowed to use that funding.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Because when you say there's no bridge, and I see bridge.
It's very difficult. I've learned a lot. Heidi, Heidi's pretty good at this, but whenever you have so many different mechanisms to pay for things, to keep track of it, you know, I tip my hat to, to the finance department and those folks, because it is a lot of work to know what pot of money you're allowed to bill to, and you're responsible for 11%, 88% is getting funded. It's very confusing, and you're allowed to bill half of it to this fund, and so that staff does a great job.
Reimbursement.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez and Director Hildreth. Seeing no more questions from council, is there any questions from the public on item number 15?
Yes, I have one. Mr. Mike Hernandez?
Welcome, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Chris, how come Section 7 not on the five-year plan? You know, when this promise was made to the property owners in Section 7, most used with teenagers. You and your teens, if you were lucky enough. I was in my 30s and 40s. I waited 45 years to see this project finish. Now you tell me it's not on the project for the next five years, so it'll be 50 years. So I'm going to make you a promise right now. When Carmen finishes her run, I'm going to sue the city for breach of contract, because we have waited 45 years. And if you can find money to do everything else, you can find money to finish that project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
We have no more comment on this item.
I'll bring it back to council for questions of staff. Seeing none, I'll call for a person in a second.
I so move.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Noble, a second by Mayor Potem Rose. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
And the motion for item 15 passes unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, we'll move on to staff reports, public safety updates. Without objection, we're going to take a break until 9:40. We'll just round it off. We'll continue our council meeting with public safety updates, and we will go to our police chief. Mr. Kirby.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I would like to thank Mayor Silva, all the members of the council, our community partners, the police department staff, and community members for supporting National Night Out. Special thanks to Corporal Willis for organizing the event, and Lieutenant Lewis and Benitez for cooking the hot dogs. I know we all look forward to additional opportunities to interact with the community in the future.
Thank you. Chief Sesseros.
Mayor, council, and community, just want to reach out and specifically thank the police department for allowing us to participate in their National Night Out. It's always a treat for us to support the public safety members of the community and interact with the community as well. As far as public safety updates of the fire district, just be advised, there is a heat warning coming to the local area within the next few days, so let's really just keep that in the community's minds and seek opportunity for, you know, cooler shelters and swimming pools if necessary. So, end of report, nothing to major report from the fire district.
Thank you for our public safety updates. With that, we'll move on to the council committee reports. Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. We had the street committee meeting where we discussed possible future funding for street projects, and my other meeting was the Mojave wastewater joint powers authority in regards to requirement from Cal recycle, and even a discussion of extra bins. And we got a grant through the JPA for recycling of solar panels you're doing a project, and there's a facility in Victaville is going to do part of it regarding to the parts. My concern is that there were so many hazard materials in solar panels that people were not aware of, and of course, we weren't given that information when everybody was pushing solar power. So my concern that I brought up to the agency was how the cost is going to affect the residents because of Cal recycle's implement of legislation, so that's what we're looking into, because three bins only means more cost for us. And that covers the two meetings that I attended.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Noble.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Got an opportunity to attend the military affairs meeting on the twelfth of August, and a few things that came out that I just want to share with public. The military mixer that we hold once a year is going to be held in Fort Irwin this year, and they're looking at around one October. There are still some more details that's going to come out for the public. Also, on the sixth of September at the cemetery, they're going to do the nine-eleven. Just remember, that is on a Saturday, so that's going to be at eleven o'clock at the cemetery, and one of the speakers is going to be someone from Fort Irwin, and I believe the mayor is going to speak as well. The couple of things that I put out at the military affairs meeting, which is our movie at the pool, at the Henderson Pool, that's going to be on the twenty-second of August, and that is going to be, the doors are going to open up at seven and start at eight-thirty, so get the kiddies out to the Henderson Pool for that. There's a small donation of five dollars at the door, but it's three dollars online if you do it early enough. I also put out the pool hours at the pool, Wednesday through Sunday, starting at twelve and until six P.M. So with the warm winter coming up and so forth, that's a good opportunity for the kids to get over to the pool and enjoy themselves. Also, on the fourth of September, those of you that are available at the town hall at the Barstow Community College, they're going to have the town hall for the big projects. So anybody that wants to hear what's going on with that, that is going to be on the fourth of September. And then on the twenty-third of August, the MCLB is having a flea market, so those of you that can get on the Marine Corps base, they're going to have a flea market to support community and activists on the base, it's a Marine Corps base. And so the last thing is, I attended the VVTA meeting yesterday. There was nothing significant for the Barstow, but we got an opportunity to recognize an outstanding employee that's doing some wonderful things for the VVTA, and we recognized her yesterday here at the Barstow Chamber. And our next military affairs meeting is going to be on the the ninth of September, of September, at eight P.M. And then our next VVTA meeting is going to be on the twenty-second, and remember, that is the third Monday instead of the second Monday because of some dynamics of people going to be out of town, so we had to shift September's meeting and October's meeting to the third Monday of September and October. And that's all I have for committee meetings.
Thank you. One more thing, though, check your flyer for the flea market. I believe it's on Sorrenton Field, which means you don't have to have access to the base.
Okay, yeah, Sorrenton Field.
Okay, that's left of the gate, so.
First coming before you go into the gate, yeah, off in the dirt field.
Right, so all the public can go, you don't have to have access to the base.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Noble. Councilmember Williams.
Nothing.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Mayor Pro Tem Rose.
Thank you, Mayor. So I am going to report out on the Homeward Bound Committee. The mayor had a prior engagement, he did show up, but I finished the meeting. Yes, I'm sorry?
For fifteen minutes.
Yes, he was there for fifteen minutes, and I appreciate him being there. Just to say that the discussion on new business for the Homeward Bound Committee that met on August fourteenth was the discussion on changing the meeting dates. However, the conclusion was that they would revisit that, so in saying that, the meeting will continue on the Thursdays, so the next meeting would be nine-eleven, and that's a date that just kind of pops out, but that's the date of the next Homeward Bound meeting. And I just wanted to share a couple of the highlights of committee reports. The New Life Fellowship is serving over a hundred people. That was reported that night by committee member Ron Bashirz, and then Ms. Angelo Pasco had reported out that New Hope Village graduated two of their, two of their women, and they're doing extremely well, and that there's seventeen still in the program, and they're also progressively doing well. And then the Laundries for Love, Laundry for Love, this is Wednesday, they end at two-thirty, but this is an organization that brings the homeless in, and they wash, they're able to wash their bedding and their clothes. And the Desert Manit also had reported out, that was committee member Eugene Budutichi, and on Saturdays, they serve food, and the food distribution's from eight-thirty to ten, from eight-thirty to ten A.M., and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rose. I did attend the street committee as reported out by Councilmember Hernandez, and we are looking at funding for street projects. That will be brought to council for a full council decision, I believe the direction was to move it forward. That was on August sixth. On August seventh, I attended in Apple Valley. It's not a committee here, but they do meet quarterly, it's the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem meeting with the High Desert Cities, including Big Bear. And big thing there, I mean, other than each city updating where they're at, was all the cities were complaining about their animal control, and three of them actually brought up a JPA idea. I told them Barstow has already taken care of theirs, so we were out of the JPA, but it could work for those three cities since their boundaries join each other. But it's just interesting that seems like, as Councilmember Williams points out all the time, we all have the same issues. On August fourteenth, I attended the SBCTA study session in Hesperia. Yes, that one was Hesperia. I did attend Homeward Bound also on that same day for about fifteen minutes. And then on August fifteenth, SBCTA Mountain Desert Division, there's only two items on that agenda which none of them addressed Barstow needs. With that, we will move on to business of the council. Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. I want to bring up over the street cleaning, because fortunately or unfortunately, I was behind while they were doing it, and there was no water being used, and it was kicking up dust, so if, I would like to see what the schedule is, and why wasn't, you know, why wasn't water being used? It was creating more of a mess, so. And the other concern is, it is going to be awfully hot the rest of this week, so please be careful. If the library's open, they're the cooling center for the county. I think it just shows how much Coral Harper is truly being missed. And as quick as we can get it done, I told individuals that we would be doing it, and that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Noble.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. There was a couple of questions that came up in reference to the foyer and getting some type of water fountain or something out there. If we can just take a look at something that we can do, even if it's just a bottles of water or something like that, because it gets long-winded here sometime, and we're here for a while, and then the weather is starting to get a little tasty out there. I also just wanted to echo with the Ted and his wife mention about Wayne Davis. We went to the vet home and had an opportunity to meet him and spend some quality time with him, and I think most of the council enjoyed themselves, I enjoyed myself. When you can see an individual a hundred years old and still moving the way he moves and stuff, I think that's outstanding. So my hat's off to Ms. Davis and reaching a hundred, the milestone. I hope a lot of us in here can do that, but it was an outstanding, and I appreciate having the opportunity to go down there and visit with him. Other than that, staff, continue to do what you do. You're doing a great job. No matter what everybody else says, you are doing a tremendous job for this city and for the folks that are in this city. Continue to do what you do, continue to provide the best quality service that you can. You can't please everyone. Some are not going to be pleased with what you do, so just continue to do what you do, and I thank you for what you do every single day. And to our public safety officers out there, you guys, you guys got a tremendous hard job out there to do. You're going to be cruising eyes for whatever you do, but continue to keep your head up, continue to perform. This council is going to continue to support you, whatever you're doing, so continue to do that. To the staff, thank you for what you do every single day. City manager, you're doing a tremendous job, continue doing what you're doing and stuff. Regardless of what people may say or think, you're doing a great job. We wouldn't have brought you on if we didn't think that. This council is behind you one-hundred percent, so continue to do what you do every single day. And so with that, please enjoy yourself. Most of us will not see us until after the holiday season, please enjoy yourself, be safe. Labor Day weekend is coming up, be safe, enjoy your family time with your family. And with that, I say thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Noble. Councilmember Williams.
Yes, I'd like a second. I'd like to bring Pat, the consultant for working with our police department, on the next agenda to give us an update on what he's doing, so.
You'll get a second for me.
Appreciate it, thank you. I want to make it very clear, I made a statement, and I'm not going to get into what the statement was, but I've upset some people like I always do, and my intentions when I make these statements is not to upset anybody. I believe what I believe, and, you know, sometimes I need to learn how to control that. Mayor Pro Tem's been telling me that for a while, I guess, still not learning that, but I'll work on that. I do support the first responders. You know, your job is tough, we get it. You know, like I said at the last council, we don't have a money tree in the back, I wish we did, but, you know, unfortunately, we don't, so we support you, I support you, I think this council definitely supports you. I know Mayor Pro Tem is very serious about her first responders. You want to piss her off, I've done in the past, just go ahead and go after the first responder, she'll light you up, she's done it to me, so. Leaks, let me explain something to you folks. When I ran for council, and I'm going to ask the Mayor Pro Tem and the mayor to confirm this during their comments, I knew more than I thought than they probably did at times. I have shared so much information. My information is coming from multiple sources for over years. We're talking retired police officers, we're talking retired firefighters, we're talking retired staff, we're talking public works. So if you've got a question, if staff wants a question, they want to come find out what I know, come sit with me, I'll educate you too. But you're not going to control me, nobody on this council is going to control me, I'm telling you now. Big mistake. So if it affects you, then come see me, if it doesn't, then don't worry about it. The Public Works, what an amazing job, but what I want to know is an update on the status of some employees, some help. We got help everywhere else, but the guys who are out there on the, out there every day cutting that grass, I want to know what the plan is to bring in some bodies. My understanding is we have two positions that are available right now, are we going to hire for those positions? Are we bringing part-time workers in? Public Works needs help. Our first responders need help, we got it, but we got to get that taken care of. To our city manager, I will tell you, you got a tough job, you got your management crew in place. I will say that we're looking for some big things, and I'm hoping if we can get a second on, an update on what Ken's been doing at the next city council meeting, or get him on the agenda.
You'll get a second for me.
I appreciate that, thank you. Just recently, chief, we got a problem with the bathrooms. Someone on Facebook said I was using you guys as minions, you know, you're my little, I run you guys around to get the homeless out of bathrooms. Well, let me tell you what, homeless should not be in the bathrooms. They're a public space that the public pays for. When you have a seven-year-old child that's going from a soccer field to a bathroom and someone's living in it, that's a problem. This problem hasn't gone away, it just continues on and on and on. So I'm hoping that maybe we could sit down, figure out through the city manager if we can get some kind of a patrol to go through the parks. I don't care if you just get out and walk around or drive the car up, but the more they see us, the better off we are. We cannot have a young child going into a bathroom and a person living there with a mattress, their food, and making it a hotel. It is unbelievable, this is ongoing, and I got to tell you, I got enough of it, I really really have, and so it's unsafe, we're asking for a problem, it's just unbelievable, so. I will absolutely back up Mr. Noble, you know, the staff is doing a great job. Sometimes I get out of control, my thumbs get a little, little problems on Facebook, you know, I'm trying to control it, slow it down, now I got Marsha Weisman out there telling me to, you know, get back on the phone again, so, you know, one minute I'm getting off, get on, I don't know what to do anymore, so. But I definitely appreciate, but I was telling, I will tell you this, Chris, I was absolutely impressed with you today. You are, you are a well-prepared knowledgeable guy. Mayor Pro Tem said something to me recently about, about your, and she's absolutely right, you are Mr. Barstow, I'm telling you, you know everything. If there's one person we cannot lose in this city, is that man right there, and I was very impressed with him today, very impressed. So with that said, again, we all support staff, we all want the best for our city, we wouldn't be sitting up here if we didn't, so again, thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Mayor Pro Tem Rose.
I don't know if I ever said Mr. Barstow, but I can say that our city is extremely blessed to have such an asset as in Mr. Heldrich. He is extremely knowledgeable, and he can run the city, hands down. He knows a lot about everything, so I just want to thank you for that. I do want to say that I did attend also, along with the council, the World World Vet Hundredth Birthday, Mr. Davis, it was quite an honor to be in his presence, and yes, he did kiss my hand, and I, like they said in that Selena movie, that I will never wash his hand again, but it really was an honor to be in his presence and all of the vets that reside up there and those attending military personnel that were there as well. And I just want to publicly, once again, thank Mr. Davis for his service. His sharp as attack and the smiles on his face were priceless. September fourth, if anybody doesn't know what that day is, I think that Mr. Councilman Williams might know about it, but September fourth is a big day, is the opening of the NFL season, and I would like to request that we all sport our favorite jersey, get out of our uniforms, get out of our ties, and maybe sport the jersey. So I welcome everybody to please bring your favorite jersey, we even have Astic jerseys local. I do have a couple of questions. So on the September, I mean, the August fifth meeting, I asked the CM to reach out to the highway station to do a contract, and I did receive a second. Ms. Clayton, where are we at with that?
I spoke to, I cannot recall his name right now, but we did speak already about getting a proposal, and he is going to be provided a proposal, and he is going to be providing a proposal.
Um, okay. At, when did you speak to him?
Do you want me to answer during my update?
I was just wondering, you spoke to him?
At the National Night Out?
Okay. Um, yeah, so can you please reach out to him again? Because that was a couple of weeks ago, and he hasn't heard anything, and, um, and our city would just, we really need that service. So if you don't mind, um, can you please reach out to him to get that contract? Because I was also looking for the billing of the contract on this, and I didn't see anything. So I, then, thank you for that update. Um, also, on the August 5th meeting, um, I had asked, um, you, Ms. Clayton, um, for a assessment of the handicap ramp, and I did receive a second. Can you let us know where we are with that assessment?
Staff will be meeting to discuss that, the, uh, the ADA requirements. We have already had some preliminary discussions, uh, but we do not want to share anything at this point because we need to evaluate further.
Um, I would like to get a second to get the, um, the assessment no later than the second meeting of September.
Can I get clarification on the assessment of what rec- staff recommendations are? Or, uh, I think that we, we would not have enough time to get a quote on how much that would cost. It's quite lengthy to get that. Uh, we've talked about, I had some ideas. I think we've talked about a few different options, but to get a quote from a contractor, that would take more than that amount of time.
How much time do you think you'll need?
I'll look to Chris to provide some assistance on that.
Can you stop my clock, please?
Uh, if you can give us 30 days, and then the only other thing, comment that I would like to add is, I would like to give an email update on that instead of at this, uh, at a council meeting.
That would be fine if it's acceptable with the council. Yeah, that, that's fine, as long as it's an update to the council. I really appreciate that. Thank you. Um, also, um, I had asked this, um, Ms. Clayton, for you to organize a tour of the Fire Department and Police, Police Department, um, at the August 5th, and I did receive a second. Um, and that would, would constitute a special meeting. Do, um, where's, where's the plans on that? Have you organized that with the Fire Department and Police Department?
It's actually beyond the Fire and Police. It's all facilities that we're going to be doing that tour, and Matthew and I have talked about a comprehensive plan. However, scheduling has been challenging. Uh, we want to make that, um, a special meeting on the same day of an, of a, a scheduled council meeting at 8:00 AM. We are working through some challenges with, uh, the second meeting of the month is what we wanted, which was today. Um, however, there's a conflict. We have the chamber, uh, at the same time, so we have to move it to the next meeting. And I think we were looking at a conflict there, or whether we could, um, schedule that. I have worked with the team to get a bus, uh, to, to schedule a bus staff and make sure that we're all available and that the resources are available for that tour. So it is underway. We've put some time and effort into it, and we're just working through the, uh, the different options to present.
Thank you. I, um, and maybe I didn't make it clear, but it was the, um, tour to the Fire Department and the Police Department because of what Measure Q has been put in or what they were proposing for Measure Q. So it was only those two facilities on which I received a second. So, um, I'll look forward to seeing when we're going to have that done. And I believe that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Okay, I also, uh, was in attendance for the proclamation that we gave to, uh, the veteran, Mr. Wayne Davis, for his 100th birthday. And, um, I didn't get my hand kissed, but I, I mistakenly figured at 100 years of age, I would give him a nice soft handshake. Well, I know why he lived to 100. He squeezed my hand very hard, so. Very, very strong man. And, uh, speaking of veterans, uh, Mrs. Weisman brought up about the veterans and the parade. It just so happens that the Kiwanis have, uh, named the parade this year after the veterans. I, I'm not exactly sure what the title is, but it is, okay, honor the military. And the grand marshal, or I should say grand marshals, will be the veterans, uh, from the Veterans Home. They will be getting a bus, and the veterans will be the grand marshals. So that is already done. Um, I want to thank our police chief, Mr. Kirby. He, uh, gave the, uh, program this morning at the Barstow Chamber of Commerce, uh, breakfast meeting, and, uh, gave a lot of good information to the businesses and, and, uh, people in attendance there. So thank you. And it's always good when we get our heads of department out there into the public, uh, to teach them, uh, or educate them, uh, what, what we're doing. I do want to, uh, yes, um, concur with Mr. Williams. He's given me a lot of information prior to being on council. And I'm going to say that as close as you can get to 100% of that information, uh, came out accurate. So I don't know where you get it. I never asked where you got it. Don't want to know. Um, but yes, Mr. Williams has some good sources for information. Once again, I lost my agenda, so I'm going to guess we're on, uh, the city manager comments, correct? Here it is. Yes, city manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I don't have a report tonight, but I do want to take this time to introduce, uh, the newest director to the city, Administrative Services Director Kimberly Turner, over human resources and, um, information technology. And she has only been here a few weeks, but has been a tremendous, um, help to all of the directors walking, you know, that, with the needs, all of the HR needs. That is a service department, um, to all departments. Um, it has also been a tr- a tremendous assistance to me to continue the negotiations that are underway with the employees and do that in a much, uh, more timely fashion, being that she has a little more time than I do to coordinate and to move things forward. So I very much appreciate and welcome, thankful for her to be here. And, uh, just a few comments that I'll make on things that were brought up. Um, the tour, I would like to first, because that was most recently talked about, uh, the request to move, uh, to tour facilities. It's important to me for the council to understand what all of our facility needs are, and I thought it was a good, appropriate time for, because, to provide a tour to the full council, we do have to schedule a special meeting. Uh, the city attorney Summers will be present. We have to open it up to the public, not only for public comment, but to join the tour. So I think it's a great opportunity for not only the council, but for those interested to be able to, um, visibly see the facilities and hear from staff firsthand on, um, any plans upcoming, any challenges, and so forth. So, uh, the other few items I want to talk about are just in response. The request for water in the lobby, we had that underway quite some time ago. We are having a, an issue with our current water provider, uh, that has changed ownership, and there have been some challenges where we have not had some water delivered. Um, so we're working through those, but in the meantime, uh, we'll make sure that we have water bottles in the lobby, uh, for the next meeting. Uh, in response to the requests for help and assistance in Public Works, I'm absolutely, wholeheartedly in support of that. I would like to have, uh, gain economies of scale. We have our Public Works team do a lot of work that we can contract out, um, without impacting not, we would not be able to hire new positions for this, and that's something we always want to consider, but to take those, um, tasks of landscape maintenance and mowing, janitorial to clean the restrooms. So, uh, we have internally talked about the specs needed, and we're moving forward with issuing RFPs for those services in addition to security services, expanding from, uh, we want to, uh, bring security back to the Harvey House, but looking at additional, um, options of what it could mean to have security, um, complementing our police department where we don't have, um, as many resources. But in the meantime, uh, Chief Kirby and I did have the discussion about what we can do at this time to patrol the parks with us, community services officers and other contract staff that would not task the resources, um, of our police officers. So, uh, with that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager, um, Clayton. So, uh, with that, uh, Councilmember Hernandez has asked that we adjourn tonight in, uh, the memory of James and Teresa Truce and Angie Harmio. So by consensus of the members?
Angie.
And Angie?
Yeah.
Angie Harmio?
Angelina.
Oh, Angelina?
Yeah.
Angelina Harmio, okay. So by consensus of the members, without objection, this meeting will be adjourned at 10:13 PM.